Okay, good evening all. I am going to call to order the City of Boulder Planning Board meeting for October 7th, 2025. We have four planning board members here in the room. Planning Board member Kaplan and Robles are online and Planning Board member Boone will be absent this evening. Our first order of business is our public participation. This is a time where anyone can speak about any topic other than our our public hearing items. Those will have a public hearing later in the meeting. And so Thomas tonight is going to walk us through the rules of public engagement.
Thank you Chair, and yes, I'm just gonna cover some basic rules for our public participation this evening. First of all, we want to let you know that the city has engaged with community members to co-create. Yes. I'll speak a little closer. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board and commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement process, you can visit our website. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to identify themselves using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. When we get to our public participation opportunities, if you are joining us remotely and you would like to speak, you can use the raise hand icon on Zoom down on your bottom bar. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and if you don't see that raise hand feature, you might need to click the reactions button, and once you expand that, you should see the raise hand function. And that's all for our rules, and we are in the open comment period now, so if there's anybody that would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hands. And we do have one raised hand. Lynn Segal, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you to call up the, well, it's it's hidden to the public, but it's clearly Papelios at where Hoshi was and the Mecca and a scooter shop and furniture arts and some good public services for people to have in Boulder. So I ask you to call this up, it's the last day. Furniture arts. How can you turn down a furniture arts place for a giant housing development that's gonna elevate the cost of housing in Boulder big time? Stop already. Then on the other one, 600 Hawthorne. Let's see. That one, I pulled that one up, 600 Hawthorne. Hmm, well, block that one too. I don't know exactly what it oh, I know, oh, nope. Whatever it is, I don't trust any of you to do the right thing for anything for Boulder. You're blocking height amendments, you're increasing F A Rs, you're giving flood zone opportunities to the millennium, which is the last thing we need in Boulder, and Sundance and Sea South and everything else that's just grow, 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 make it more and more expensive to live here. Stop already, stop. And we need these services where Hoshi is. I took my car there for years. And now, I don't, I drive my car four times a year. But one of the times is having to go out to Hoshi Motors way out east of town because it's not central anymore, is it? Shame on you, shame on you. You got dollar signs in your eyes, and I see it all the time. It's like, why, why are you doing this? It's wrecking this town. The more the more jobs there are, the more housing for the jobs, the more jobs for the housing, the more jobs housing imbalance. What are you doing about that? That's in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, you're violating it every day. Shame on you, shame on all of you. Stop already. Done.
Thanks for joining us tonight Lynn, if anybody else would like to speak, please go ahead and raise their hands, otherwise we will conclude the open comment period.
Anyone in the room that wants to speak during public participation, not one of our public hearings?
Okay, we have no other raised hands online, back to Chair.
That finishes Agenda Item number two, public participation, moving on to Agenda Item number three. We have two sets of minutes to approve, and I was just reviewing the latest packet which came anyway, more recently than the first packet. And I'm a little confused by what is in the packet here. So the first Agenda Item 3A is the August 26th Draft Planning Board Meeting Minutes, and as I scroll through the packet to get to those minutes, I see two sets of minutes for September 2nd, is that what I'm seeing here? In your packet, the, as you scroll through?
I think you all might have both pulled that up during a, I was uploading a different, replacing the version that was on there, and there was a mistake in the packet for about fifteen minutes. So if you refresh that, you should see the current packet.
Okay, so is the first set of minutes in the packet, the August 26th minutes, just mislabeled?
No, they're labeled correctly.
In the current packet, in my packet, they're mislabeled, in the current packet, they're correct, okay. So then, do we have any changes, corrections, or modifications to the August 26th minutes as they are in the, I see Laura's hand up.
Hi, thank you Mark. I would like to suggest that we not adopt the August 26th, 2025 minutes tonight. You folks may have seen an email that I shared with staff that this set of minutes had a matters item for us to discuss staff's proposal about the BVCP update and some policy choices, and we provided some substantial comments to staff, but these have not yet been captured in the minutes, and staff have said that they are working on summarizing our comments for City Council. And so I am suggesting that we wait to adopt these notes until we can include a staff summary of our comments on this very substantial and meaningful item.
Kurt.
I would support that, and I give thanks to Laura for for calling that out. I, didn't occur to me that we could have, we could ask for that, but I think that that's a good, good idea.
Laura, would you be interested in just going ahead and making a motion to postpone approval until a future date and when staff resubmits them?
I move that we postpone approval of the August 26th, 2025 Draft Planning Board minutes until such time as staff has been able to update them.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, any other discussion? Okay, I'm gonna go left to right tonight, Mason?
I feel like I should abstain because I wasn't there, or should I vote on this?
If you weren't there, then no, you would not, yeah, abstain. Okay, Claudia?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. We have postponed those minutes. Now, we go to the approval of the September 2nd, 2025 Draft Planning Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any, is there any discussion, suggested changes, modifications? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I move approval of the September 2nd Planning Board Minutes.
Second.
Okay. And Mason, I think you were there for this, no, you were not there for this one either, okay, you're abstaining, okay. Claudia?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. The September 2nd minutes are approved. We now move to Agenda Item number four, call-up items. We have two possible call-up items today. I'm going to read them out, and we'll begin with Item 4A, call-up item. A final plat to subdivide the 2.33 acre site, including the properties generally known as 2504, 2506, 2536, and 2546 Spruce Street, 2055 26th Street, and 2537 Pearl Street into two new lots. The plat includes dedications of utility easements, drainage easements, public access easements, and emergency access, and an emergency access easement. This application is subject to potential call-up honor before October 7th, 2025. Reviewed under case number T E C 2025-00009. Are there any questions, any discussion about this particular final plat call-up item? Kurt?
I just have one very minor question, which is about the public access easement that's shown on the south side along Pearl Street, it's about a nine and a half, I think, foot wide public access easement, and I'm just wondering what that is for. The plat indicates an eighty-foot right-of-way for Pearl Street, which is probably enough for Pearl as it's currently built, do you, does anybody know about that? Chandler, is that you?
Okay. It is, but I might defer to Curtis. I don't have the plans up in front of me.
Can you introduce yourself Curtis? And turn on your mic, there's a little button, there you go, oh, you there we go.
Check, check. Chair, Board, Curtis Stevens with Sunita's Group, civil engineer on a lot of the docket tonight apparently. And this one, that is an easement, we actually are doing a detached sidewalk and a wider sidewalk, so we actually needed, the right-of-way didn't quite cover it, so we're adding additional P A E to cover that. And I think that's look right to you, I didn't have the plans in front of me, but I've spent enough hours staring at it.
Okay, I figured that, but thank you.
Any other questions, comments, Laura?
Forgive me, I didn't study this one super closely, but is the purpose of the subdivision, does it have something to do with the Mecca building and the desire of the tenant in that building to purchase it or make some arrangement with the site owner about that building?
Yes, sorry, this is Chandler Van Skok, Planning and Development Services. Yeah, I mean, the subdivision is both to allow the development outside of the Mecca lot to be built as shown on the approved site review, and then also to create a separate lot for the Mecca owner to be able to purchase.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought, and so this is a completed site review, the only thing we're looking at tonight is just subdividing out the Mecca building.
Well, it's, it's changing a whole bunch of lots into two lots, so it's kind of combining the remainder of the lots that are outside of that, the new Mecca lot as well. But yes, that is, that is one portion of the subdivision that you're looking at.
Got it, thank you so much.
Okay. Any other comment or question? Okay. Any desire to call it up on any board member's part? Okay, we move on to Item 4B. Call-up item, a final plat to subdivide 600 Hawthorne Avenue into two lots and dedicate public act and dedicate public access easement and utility easement along Sixth Street and Hawthorne Avenue, and the utility easement along the east side of of Proposed Lot 1. The proposed lots will be 10,632 square feet and 8,000 square feet. This application is subject to potential call-up honor before October 8th, 2025. Reviewed under case number T E C 2024-00054. Questions, comments? Desire to call it up? Kurt?
I will ask the same question as I asked in the last question, the last
Sounded like it was a valid question.
Yeah, which is about the public access easements, both along Hawthorne and Sixth Street. Do you, I'm, my understanding is generally, this is my neighborhood, and generally in the neighborhood, there's about eight feet of additional right-of-way outside the existing sidewalk, so that would be enough to provide a detached sidewalk. But, so the, I'm surprised at the need for a public access easement.
Alex Pachaz is the case manager on this one, I think those easements are to accommodate future detached sidewalk if and when the property is redeveloped, but Alex, do you want to speak to the easements?
Yeah, that's correct, they are for detached sidewalks.
Okay, which will be required as part of the, any development, I see.
Right, if two new single-family homes develop in whatever sequence, they'll be required to construct.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, anyone? I don't see anyone desiring to call this up. Okay, that closes out our call-up items, neither were called up. We move on to Agenda Item 5, which is our public hearing. Agenda Item 5A. A public hearing and consideration of a recommendation on a petition to annex an approximately 0.96 acre property generally located at 915 Fifth Street with an initial zoning designation of residential estate, R E, case number L U R 2024-00062. So, the way this is going to go is we're going to have a staff presentation, clarifying questions from the board. The applicant will have an opportunity to present, clarifying questions to the applicant, and then the board will deliberate on the possible annexation, so we're gonna, we're gonna begin with Chandler.
All right, thank you Mark, and good evening Planning Board members. As Mark just said, we're here tonight to consider the annexation and initial zoning of 915 15th Street. Just to quickly go over the review processes. So annexation, as you all know, is the process whereby land is incorporated into the municipal boundaries. Land may be considered for annexation if it complies with state annexation statutes, as well as the policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan provides a framework for annexation and urban service provision within the city. Per Annexation Policy 117B, the city will actively pursue annexation of substantially developed Area 2 properties along the western boundary of the city below the blue line, which is what this property is. If a property is annexed, zoning is established consistent with the land use designation in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. So in terms of the location of the site, sorry, I had to print out my notes today. The subject parcel overall contains about 1.2 acres, it is about 0.96 acres that is currently up for annexation. That site is located on the western edge of the City of Boulder, on the west side of Fifth Street and east of Flagstaff Road. The eastern approximately 110 feet of the parcel, which is shown in orange on this image, was annexed into the city in 1952 through ordinance 1696. The previously annexed portion of the property provides continuity with regards to eligibility for annexation. The property is not directly adjacent to City of Boulder right-of-way as 921 Fifth Street lies between this property and Fifth Street to the east. 915 Fifth Street is accessed from Fifth Street via a shared driveway that crosses the adjacent 845 Fifth Street property to the south. The shared driveway also serves the 845 Fifth Street property. An existing driveway easement covers the shared driveway. City of Boulder Water and Sewer is present in Fifth Street and currently serves adjacent parcels, including the unannexed 845 Fifth Street property. The existing shared driveway easement allows for the installation of water and sewer services along the shared driveway to provide connection to the existing residents on the subject parcel, 915 Fifth Street. In terms of existing conditions, the property is currently not being served by City of Boulder Water or Sewer, but rather has been provided water via water delivery service and a cistern. No water well exists. Sanitary sewer is currently handled via a permitted septic system. The property was originally located above the blue line and not eligible for City of Boulder Water Service, but a blue line amendment approved by the voters in 2016 placed the existing residents below the blue line and eligible, made the property eligible for water service connection upon annexation. More recently in 2023, one of the primary water delivery service providers in Boulder County ceased operations, and as a result, property owners have been struggling to consistently have reliable water. This has become a significant concern during wildfire season, and as such, the owners of 915 Fifth Street find annexation and access to City of Boulder Water Service critical. The property is located in BVCP Planning Area 2. Area 2 refers to land that is now under county jurisdiction where annexation to the city can be considered consistent with city policies. 1.08 adapted to limits on fiscal expansion, 110 growth requirements, and 117 annexation. Annexation is required before adequate facilities and services are furnished to properties in Area 2. The blue line runs through the 915 Fifth Street property. The portion lying west of, and therefore above the blue line, is not eligible for water or sewer services, and is therefore undevelopable. The Boulder Valley Comp Plan land use designation for the site is low-density residential. The density anticipated for L R areas is two to six dwelling units per acre, and the anticipated uses are detached, single-family units. The applicant is requesting annexation into the City of Boulder with an initial zoning designation of R E or residential estate. The site is designated as low-density residential, as I mentioned, which anticipates low-density, single-family units. L R land use anticipates predominantly, oop, single-family detached units. Proposed zoning is R E, which has a density range consistent with the land use designation and would be compatible with the surrounding area, which as you can see here is also in the nearby blocks zoned R E. So as I just mentioned, the proposed zoning designation is residential estate or R E. There is an existing detached dwelling unit on the property which will remain in place following annexation. The proposed annexation agreement, which was provided as an attachment in your packet, prohibits any new development on the 0.48 acre portion of the property above the blue line and restricts future development potential for the remaining portion of the lot to one dwelling unit only. So there's no additional development potential for the property proposed for annexation. The only new construction proposed as part of this annexation is the addition of one water line and one sewer line within the private driveway easement serving the property and a new fire hydrant at the base of the driveway. So as I mentioned before, annexations are required to comply with state annexation statutes, as well as the policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and other ordinances of the city. Pursuant to Colorado Revised Statutes 31121041A, this property is eligible for annexation if the annexation is completed in a series. A series annexation occurs when the property is annexed in portions concurrently to achieve contiguity through approval of two separate ordinances. The first ordinance is intended to annex a portion of the property that concurrently meet the one-sixth contiguity requirement. Approval of the first ordinance would then establish the new municipal limits and create at least one-sixth contiguity to the city limits for the remainder of the property. Annexation of the remainder of the property would then be approved in a second ordinance. To meet the terms of the series annexation, the applicant filed two separate annexation maps and requested a serial annexation in the petition. This process will require at least two public hearings, the first hearing which we are at now is where Planning Board will make a recommendation to council, and the second hearing will be City Council making the final determination to approve or deny the proposed ordinances. In terms of public comment, noticing was, noticing of the application has been done consistent with the land use code requirements. Notice was mailed to all property owners within 600 feet of the subject property, and a sign was posted on the property for at least 10 days prior to the hearing. All notice requirements of Section 942 of the Boulder Revised Code have been met. No public comments or questions have been received in response to the public notice. So there are three key issues for discussion tonight. The first is whether the proposal, the proposed annexation petition complies with applicable state annexation statutes. The second is, is the proposal consistent with the city's annexation and other Boulder Valley Comp Plan policies? And the third key issue is whether the initial zoning request of R E or residential estate is appropriate for the subject property. So for the first key issue, which is state statutes, staff has reviewed the annexation request for compliance with Sections 3112, 31, 3112104, 3113105, and 3112107 of the Colorado Revised Statutes, and with Section 30 of Article 2 of the State Constitution, and finds that the application is consistent with the statutory and constitutional requirements referred to Attachment F for staff's analysis of the state annexation statutes. Key issue number two, which is whether the proposal is consistent with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan policies. As I mentioned before, the property at 915 Fifth Street may be considered for annexation due to its designation as an Area 2 property. The Area 2 designation for this property refers to the planning area now under county jurisdiction where annexation to the city can be considered consistent with BVCP policies. Pursuant to Boulder Valley Comp Plan Policy 117C, because the developed portion of the property is located in Area 2 and was moved east of the blue line in 2016, the property is considered substantially developed, and no additional dwelling units may be added. The annexation will allow connection of the existing home to the city's water systems and will provide a critical public health benefit by providing safe and quality drinking water, as well as a new fire hydrant, thereby reducing the public health threat that can occur from failing septic systems and improving wildfire safety on the property and in surrounding area. In terms of the zoning key issue, initial zoning is established pursuant to Section 9218, zoning of annexed land in the Boulder Revised Code. If a property is annexed, zoning will be established consistent with the goals of the land use map and the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. As described above, the site is designated as low-density residential or L R, which anticipates a density of two to six dwelling units per acre or less. L R land use anticipates predominantly single-family detached units. The proposed zoning is residential estate, which has a density range consistent with the land use designation and would be compatible with the surrounding area, which is also zoned R E. Considering that the adjacent parcels in surrounding area are zoned R E, staff finds the proposed zoning is consistent with the underlying land use designation and the community's desired future land use for the area. So in conclusion, staff finds that the proposed annexation is consistent with state statutes, as well as the policies of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, and that the initial zoning request of residential estate is consistent with comp plan goals and the land use designation as well. Therefore, staff recommends that Planning Board adopt the following motion, which I have here, and I will not read the whole thing out to you, but it is there for when we need it. And now I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Excuse me, thank you Chandler. Are there questions for staff from anyone, I'm just looking online, and ML?
Thank you, thank you for that presentation Chandler. My question concerns concerns the area above the blue line. So I understand it cannot be developed, so won't be benefiting from city services, but it also doesn't provide a community benefit to Boulder. So I'm curious as to why that piece there is being annexed. Can we annex, you know, everything below the blue line and not annex the part that there is no benefit to annexing?
So the the Comp Plan actually only requires substantial community benefit for properties that have remaining development potential. So for properties that are on the western city limits that are below the blue line, they're considered substantially developed. So we don't require substantial community benefit as part of this annexation. That's that's the part of the policy that says that the city will actively pursue annexation of these properties, as opposed to other properties that have substantial development potential. That's where we negotiate and we get the community benefit. So in this case, OSMP doesn't really want the property, but we also can't require them to subdivide it off and leave it in the county.
So that blue line can't be a cutoff line, I'm hearing you say. That isn't an option.
It's a cutoff line for development, but we can't require them to sell a portion of their property because of it.
Or just to have it remain in the county. That isn't possible. It can't be in two jurisdictions.
You know, maybe it could be, but I think that typically the city's policy is just to annex the entire property.
Got it. Thank you. That's my only question.
Okay, Kurt.
First of all, to follow up on ML's question, I believe currently it's already split between the city and the county, right? The the lower 110 feet or whatever is already annexed. So it certainly would be possible to annex part of, an additional part of, it seems to me.
Yes.
And then regarding the development potential, that's really staff's interpretation of whether something has development potential, right? That's not specifically outlined, defined in the code.
It's stated in the Comp Plan.
It is stated in the Comp Plan, but it's not really defined in the Comp Plan.
Yeah.
Isn't that correct?
Well, and I think when we're talking about future development potential, we we look at the potential zoning district that's going to be placed on it and do an analysis of how many units it would support in this particular case.
But it does actually say in Policy 117C that properties on the western edge of the city that are below the blue line are considered substantially developed.
Correct. Yeah. But we do that analysis based on the zoning to determine whether or not there's any additional potential.
Okay. Okay. So following up on that, what what is the square footage of the existing house? Do you know?
I would have to defer to the applicant.
Okay. And if the entire property were annexed, what would the floor area allowable floor area under the compatible development rules be?
Not sure.
Okay.
I can look it up. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Those are my questions. If I stop sharing my screen. Okay.
Claudia.
So Chandler, you talked about water service as being important for fire protection in this location. And I was wondering if, as part of the proposed annexation agreement, there are any requirements for this property to come into compliance with WUI building or landscaping codes?
No, because they're not proposing any changes to the property as part of this.
Is there, is there any mechanism for recommending such requirements?
So the Comprehensive Plan also states that for, so annexation of existing substantially developed areas will be offered in a manner and on terms and conditions that respect existing lifestyles and densities. The city will expect these areas to be brought to city standards only where necessary to protect the health and safety of the residents of the subject area or of the city. So there's nothing in there currently that requires them to come into compliance with their new, I mean, they've been in this process since way before the WUI standards were adopted. So no, there's nothing in there currently negotiated.
Thank you.
Mason.
So a lot of my questions had to do with WUI, but I think you just kind of negated a lot of them. But one potentially remaining, the driveway geometry has, is there an opportunity to have Boulder Fire look at the grade with turnouts, things of that nature, to make sure that that this is accessible?
Yeah, we did work very closely with David Lowry, the fire chief. He's been out to the property and worked with them. He has determined that they can get up the driveway if needed.
Okay, cool. And then my, this other one is a more general question. And maybe I'm just being dense because I feel like you talked about this a little bit, but I'm not, I'm not picking up on it. Should there be a broader Hills annexation framework to avoid piecemeal precedents? Like, should we, like, is it, I don't quite understand the process as to why we're doing it in piecemeal and not just as like a whole, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, so the the way that we kind of interpret the Comprehensive Plan policy about actively pursuing annexation is really just about not providing or not requiring additional community benefit and being supportive of proposed annexations, but the city historically hasn't really gone out and kind of proactively forced properties to annex. It is still voluntary. So in this case, these property owners came in with an individual petition for annexation. If the other neighbors had expressed interest, they could have come in and offered as a group annexation. We would have reviewed that and supported it, but they didn't, so.
So the policy basically is just not to erect barriers and and to, okay. And that's all my questions.
Okay, and I think Laura, Laura, if you're there and you have questions, raise your hand. Otherwise, we're going to skip past you. You had mentioned that you may not be available for this. Most of, I'll call on myself. Most of my questions were answered. Chandler, thank you very much for doing the map work and so forth. And and I don't know if you had a chance to read that memo, but I was, I was pleasantly surprised that all the surrounding property owners had, whether annexed or not, had city water. So this was the last holdout. I do have a technical question. You said, so annexations are subject to the advice of planning board, but only council can actually adopt the ordinance to approve the annexation.
Correct.
But since we have to do this because of the state law of the contiguity issue, are we, we are just advising approval or denial of the annex, of of two annexations, one and then the other? Okay. And then council would then actually formally approve those in sequence?
Correct.
All right. Okay, I don't have, I don't have any other questions for staff. So, okay, and Laura is here. No questions. Okay. All right. Any, any additional last questions for staff? Okay. It's now time for the applicant, if they have anything to say or make a presentation. Now is the time to do that, and the microphone is on, and please introduce yourself.
I will. Hi, my name is Rochelle Woods, and I want to first of all, thank you all for your time, because this property is special, to say the least. My husband Lee and I, Lee's veterinarian, and we've lived here about 30 years, 30 plus years. In that time, we both owned two really small businesses, a veterinary clinic that nobody here is older than us, but was Marshall Road at one point, and now is Broadway Animal Hospital. Lee has since retired. I still have a little business. We both employed employees from the city of Boulder. We were, we'd been very involved in community, putting the first mobile adoption unit on the road. We bought our home in 2001. We came from Missouri to Colorado, like many have from other places. And we love our property. Someone asked about square footage. It's not, it's two-bedroom house. We didn't build big. We, it's my husband and I only. We have been trucking water to our property for 20 some years. And as we've gotten older, it just gets scarier. We've been involved in almost to this point. So I can't tell you, if I sound a little emotional, how good it is to finally be here, because we had to, you know, bring it to a ballot. We started this process in 211, 211. So it's been a long road. Water delivery is becoming less and less reliable. We've been left without water multiple times. It's scary, because if you don't have water, as I was told years ago, a small kitchen fire can turn, I always likened it to, I didn't want to be Mrs. O'Leary's cow burning down the city of Boulder. So this water would allow us to sleep better. We really appreciate everybody's work. This started way back with Edward Stafford and Chris Maycheck, for those of you who know, and I know how many hours planning, you know, you all have put into this. But we would just be so grateful if we could get this to council again. You know, it was way before the blue line. And we want to, I always kid, I want to go out toes up in my house, but not in a fire. So I'm hoping this goes smoothly, and we're here for any questions you have. But we have no plans to move. We're committed to the community of Boulder, and even though we've lived in the county, we've employed in the city and have done all our charity work in the city. So thank you for your time. I know this property is complicated. I think it's a really special place, and I started communicating with Dave Lowry wow, back in 211. So he has even gone as far as to say we've really followed the rules. We don't have, you know, things within, much foliage within five feet of our house. And so we've tried to be conscious of where we live and also haven't tried to expand the house. We've just loved being there, but we'll sleep better if we have water. Our engineer, Curtis Stevens, is here. He's probably better for more technical questions, but if anybody has anything for me, that's why we're here.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight. Okay, questions for the applicant? Okay. Okay, Kurt, you look like you may have one, but no. Okay. Okay, all right. We're going to then go to our public hearing, which is an opportunity for anyone either online or in the room to speak to this particular item. And Thomas, I don't know if we have anyone online that wants to speak to this?
Sure, yeah, we don't have anybody signed up in person for this item. But if anybody's online that would like to speak to item 5A, please go ahead and raise your hand. We have one raised hand so far. Lynn Segal, Lynn, you will have three minutes, and I just unmuted you, so you can go ahead and begin speaking, and I'll start your timer.
No one seems to be curious why this land was outside of the blue line in the first place. No curiosity whatsoever. I'm just going to trust that it was there for the re, for a reason, and that this is, this is an upvaluing of the property to be annexed and to have, you know, that, I think we've got enough housing cost issues in Boulder without upvaluing things like you did with 1015 Juniper, when, oh, it's on a floodplain and we can't, we can't expand our place into that. Now they're building every square inch of that place with a subsidy from the city of about $5 million bucks. That's just not okay with me. That 2016 decision isn't okay with me. I don't know the circumstances of it, and I don't know why it was outside of the blue line, and now why it's inside the blue line. And I think that's a fair question to ask and to understand before you go and approve an annexation. I mean, as much as the next person, okay, I, I can empathize with the people that they need water, but they bought this place without water. So what gives? Free Palestine. Get the heck out of Gaza. Stop the occupation. Reparations, big time. Then we wouldn't have people so desperate in this country for getting an annexation that, you know, when they were, they were outside of the blue line. You buy it outside the blue line, that's what you get. I know they've been great philanthropists to the community. That really shouldn't have anything to do with it. Why was it outside of the blue line in the first place? What happened in 2016? Why? Have you no curiosity? Think the blue line's just, you know, a figment of our imaginations? The blue line is why this place is what it is, so that you don't have any building above it. And like I say, it's obscene that the United States is not supporting Palestine. And that's where all our money's going. Everyone. Phil Wiser, bought by AIPAC, everybody. Governors. It's all this nefarious plan. And I won't see a local city issue like this annexation be just accepted without protest.
Thank you, Lynn. If anybody else would like to speak for the public hearing on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand. Otherwise, we will conclude this portion of the meeting.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing. And now we're moving on to board deliberation and motion making. So does any board member have thoughts about this before we move to motion making? Kurt.
Overall, I support the proposed annexation. I think that that it makes sense in a lot of ways. My only concern is about the amount of actual development potential that remains on this lot. And I understand that the current property owners have zero plans to develop it, which is great. But at some point, someone else is going to own it, and by my calculation, and I think that I actually undercounted, but it would be about 10,400, 10,454 square feet of floor area allowed under the compatible development rules, which is a lot. So I would, I, I'm, I guess, putting forth the possibility of a, an amendment to the annexation agreement to limit the allowable square footage to, say, 3,000 square feet. And so I can put that as a motion or just get people's general thoughts on that?
I have a question. When you say 3,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet additional or 3,000 square feet total? Because I, and and this may be a question that goes back to the applicant. I was looking at the county records, and I, I, I can pull them up again, but I thought it was, let's just ask the applicant. Can you tell us what the county thinks your square footage is? Right. About being very exact, around 3,200 square feet.
Could we please have the speaker use a microphone?
Yeah, come on up. Tap, tap. Tap, tap the button there on the, yep, there we go. Thank you, Lee.
Okay.
Okay.
So not, I haven't pulled the, the records and probably not paid enough of attention, but I think we're around 3,200 square feet.
So my intent was in, in making this So my intent was in, in making this proposal was not to limit them below what is currently built. So I had, that, that was why I asked the question before, and she said, well, it's a two-bedroom house. And so I thought three thousand would be sufficient. So higher would, thirty-five hundred or something would be fine by me. I'm not fixed on that number, but I think that it would be appropriate to limit it well below ten thousand square feet.
Two other board members have, uh, thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, Mel?
Um, yeah, I was curious about that as well, and, and that's why I was wondering about the property that's above the blue line. I know it's not developable, but I guessing that the square footage would count as total square footage, which impacts the amount of buildable uh, land that remains. So um, you know, it's, I, again, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not interested in um, kind of limiting what the current people are able to do, i.e. get water and city services. Um, but I do think we are opening this for potential redevelopment into a McMansion up on the top of the hill there, which um, are always a challenge to Boulder as the blue line shifts um, to see housing going up where we all think that this is um, not developable. Uh, so I, I think I would be interested in supporting uh, something um, to, along the lines of what Kurt is talking about.
Um, okay, I'll make a comment that Kurt, I, I actually um, uh, count the area above the blue line as, A, being undevelopable, and, and it makes logic, logical sense to exclude that from a floor area calculation of what is developable. And I think that um, while uh, the addition of a fire hydrant is an advantage to the city in that location, um, the uh, the connection to city water is a a great advantage to the applicant, and I, I don't begrudge them that, but is also adds a significant value to the property over a property that is um, is not connected to city water. So I think a reasonable development limit, understanding that any development about, with, with our new uh, uh, inclusionary housing ordinance applying to single-family residences, that, that, that there would be um, benefit to the community at that point as well. So I would be interested in supporting that at a higher number, four thousand something, four thousand total, according to the, the way the county calculates it, which is different. It, it, it's, it's a variable item in terms of uh, square feet of walkout basement and stuff, and I anyway, I, I've been doing battle with the county on, on how you define what is the total square footage. So um, do you have a, do you, do you have a draft of something that you're ready to, ready to pursue?
I do.
Okay.
Before, before we do that, can, can we just ask staff a question about uh, just to fact-check uh, and verify or modify Kurt's estimate of the development potential here?
Um, his estimate was, was accurate around ten thousand square feet.
And in the annexation agreement where it says this lot is considered to have no additional development potential, does that just apply to additional units, but does not apply to additional square footage?
That's correct.
Can, can you explain why that is? Because I would think that a larger house would also have larger water demands.
Yeah, again, um, that, it's a, it's a stock uh, clause that goes into annexation cred, uh, annexation agreements like this that i- is designed to limit additional units, not additional square footage. Um, a residential water line that's being brought to the property is going to be sized for a property that's, you know, a thousand square feet or ten thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you.
And according to the county, the current um, square footage is twenty-three hundred square feet, but they do calculate floor area quite a bit differently than we do.
So I move that Planning Board recommend that City Council amend the annexation agreement to limit built floor area on the property to thirty-five hundred square feet.
Okay, and before we go to a second, if anyone, w- we have this brief moment in time where we may discuss wording. Um, does anyone want to address Kurt or his motion before there's a second? I, I, I would um, even though a four thousand square foot home is a very large home, I would uh, I would be much more likely to support this if, if the total square footage was four thousand.
Why is that, Mark? May I ask?
Um, I think that uh, w- when we talk of the um, there is a I don't know if it was in BBC policy, one point one seven that discusses, and I don't have my BVCP packet open, but there is an acknowledgement of the types and sizes of properties adjacent to this, and some of these are very modest, some of them are ridiculously large. And um, so uh, I think that um, allowing for uh, a subsequent owner to modestly increase the size up to a total of four thousand in that location on a lot that size, in that zoning uh, area, i- is a reasonable amount. And um, so that's, that's my thought. Go ahead.
Speak to that. I actually agree for the most part with Mark on this. I think the, the goals that we might have in trying to limit um, the size of a structure on this site do not have anything to do with whether or not this is going to be um, luxury housing at any point in the future. It already is, it always will be based on this location. I think our interest here should be in, you know, preserving some sort of um, what's the word that I'm looking here for here? I mean, the very things that we, we were trying to get at with the blue line in the first place, which is not having visible development above certain elevations and the like. And I think in that sense, thirty-five hundred versus four thousand is not r- the real issue. I'm inclined to go with the higher four thousand to allow for, you know, modest modifications on the site in the future, and also because we do have some uncertainty between how the county measures um, your home size and how the city seems to be measuring it. So I would also support that slightly higher number.
Kurt?
I would accept a friendly amendment
At this moment, okay.
to, to four thousand square feet. I'm not gonna fight too much over five hundred square feet. I do feel though that any kind of a limitations close to what is currently there actually is most in, most congruent with one point one seven of the BVCP, which says annexation of existing substantially developed areas, which is this, will be offered in a manner and on terms and conditions that respect existing lifestyles and densities. So the, the size of the house is not specifically about lifestyle, it's not about densities. Maybe to some extent it's about lifestyles, but really to me, it's saying we want these things to stay pretty much the way they are, which actually speaks in favor of a limitation on substantial increase in size.
So um, are, are you okay if Thomas modifies that to four thousand?
I am okay. Thomas, can you change that? Thank you.
Okay, I will second that motion.
Wait a minute, I have a question. I have my hand up. Sorry, I didn't think you saw.
Uh, well, Mel, uh, hang on, just, I'm um, okay, let's go ahead with your question, but we do have, we do have a motion and a second, and we can speak to the motion and the second now, if you'd like, or if you have a question for someone in relation to the motion, go ahead.
I, I was trying to ask the question, I had my hand up before you, it was seconded. However, so my question is, um, and I think that Chandler or Charles would be able to answer this. You've been talking about the difference between the way the county figures square footage and the way the city squ- figures square footage. Right now, the county says that the existing property is what, twenty? Did you say twenty-five hundred square feet? What would the city say that same property square footage is? Is it higher or lower?
Uh, I don't know. We don't have records of the construction because it's, it's in the county. Um, so I'd, I'd have to look at floor plans and measure it out. Um, I'm not sure what the difference is between the county's definition of floor area and the city's. If anything, I would imagine ours is probably stricter. Um, so I would guess that our floor area would probably be smaller than what the county is saying, but again, I'd, I'd have to look at actual floor plans to make that determination.
Okay, uh, it just that, um, you said that all along, that the county and the city figure them differently, but you don't have any historical overall reference as to whether one is
Yeah, it's
bigger or lower. You just know they're different. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, so I'm guessing what we're saying is four thousand square feet. We're saying as calculated by the city of Boulder, since it'll be in the city, is that, is that?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Okay, Mel, any other question? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Kurt, it's your turn to speak to your motion, if you have anything additional.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that I feel that this is most consistent with the, the um, policy, BVCP policy, one point one seven, as I explained. Um, I think that a allowing for a vast increase in housing size would not be consistent with that policy.
Great, a second, I concur. Any other comment? Or debate? Okay, um, then we will go to a vote and Mason.
Actually, I, before we vote, I did have a comment.
I'm sorry, Laura, did I, I'm, I'm missing hands.
I was, I was slow on the hand raise. It's not your fault, Mark. Um, so I, I wanted to comment and say, I, I'm not going to be supporting this. So my concern here, I share everybody's concern with not being a fan of large, uh, very, very large single-unit homes. Um, my concern here is with uh, fairness and equal application of our policies. It, I, it does not sound like this has been required of past annexations. We have no guarantee that this would be required of future annexations, because this is not actually written into the policy in the BVCP, and it is not the way that staff has interpreted it in the past. Um, and I do have some concern about the, you know, what it might mean for future properties that we do actively want to annex, who might then become uh, scared off of annexation because they don't want that limit on their development potential, which they would have if they remained in the county. And many of these properties are already being served by city water, so they don't have that strong incentive to annex into the city. Um, I would also point out that, as other board members have mentioned, because we do not have occupancy limits, um, you know, a single-unit home can become home to many family units uh, in the future. And um, it does seem that if we in the future change what is possible in terms of number of units on our E lots, it sounds like this development um, annexation could be amended. Uh, and if we write a size limit into it, that becomes harder. So I, I just feel like this is a very complex thing that I'm not, I'm not going to support changing it in this way tonight.
Thank you, Laura. I'll, I'll um, take the opportunity to reply to that in that annexations, as we have been uh, taught and studied, are a negotiation. This is not a site review, this is not a use review. This is a negotiation. And as evidenced by the annexation agreements that I've been involved in, they have each been unique and different and subject to the best advice of this board in relation to BVCP policies and uh, benefit to the city. So um, I, I don't, I, I, I understand the concerns about consistency, but we're, we're dealing with the BVCP and annexation, not site review and code. So that's my um, that's my reason behind uh, allowing for and being willing to discuss this sort of variation uh, amongst, uh, amongst annexations. So anyway, any other comment on this uh, this motion? Okay, and if I'm, I don't see any hands up, okay, I've got to look at everybody. All right, we're going to uh, vote. Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Mel?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, so that is a five, two, one in support, and unless anyone has anything else they need to say, we're going to close out Agenda Item Five A. Congratulations upon your
Well, we, we only amended the annexation agreement.
Oh. Okay, all right. Oh my goodness, God, I keep jumping ahead here. I'm got, uh, okay.
Well, and to be precise, we didn't amend it. We just recommended that City Council amend it.
We, we, yes, we uh, we had a motion to add a recommendation to council. Now, is there anyone who has a um, a motion? And in chat, fact, Chandler, could you put up your suggested motion language?
I can pull it over into
Or Thomas, okay? Kurt, you got your hand up? Go ahead.
I move to recommend the City Council approval of the proposed series annexation of the property located at nine fifteen Fifth Street with an initial zoning designation of residential estate, RE, pertaining to case number LUR twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-zero-six-two, incorporating the staff memorandum as findings of fact, subject to the recommended conditions of approval for the annexation as provided for in the proposed annexation agreement as amended, as, no, as proposed amended in Attachment D. Sorry, I shouldn't have made that. Editorial comment.
I, I, yeah, I'm not sure we should be adding as proposed amended. We already made the recommendation that City Council amended. I think we should just have a recommendation to approve the annexation.
Yes. Should I do this again? Uh, that, that was, I put that in as a a humorous aside, but that was not
Yeah, let's just, let's just make a clean, a clean
Let me try this again. Sorry about that. Well, I move to recommend to City Council approval of the proposed series annexation of the property located at nine fifteen Fifth Street with an initial zoning designation of residential estate, RE, pertaining to case number LUR twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-zero-six-two, incorporating the staff memorandum as findings of fact, subject to the recommended conditions of approval for the annexation as provided for in the proposed annexation agreement in Attachment D.
Thank you, Kurt.
I will second.
And Laura has seconded. Okay, Kurt, it's your turn to speak to your motion.
Okay, uh, yeah, I have nothing to add. I think that this makes a lot of sense, given the um, the annexation um, the policies in the, in the comp plan, especially one point one seven. So I, I think that this uh, is something that will be of benefit to the city and certainly of benefit to the property owners.
Laura, any, anything to add?
Nothing to add. I just, I think it meets our criteria for annexation.
Great, thank you. Any other board member with any comment on this motion? Okay, now we can go to a, a vote on the uh, on the main motion. Okay. Um, Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, now congratulations to the applicant who just left. Okay. Okay, thank you, Chandler. Okay, thank you Chandler. Okay, we um Does anyone need a break or are we ready to jump into the next item? Okay. Okay, on we go. Uh, our next item is a public hearing item, agenda item five B, uh, public hearing and consideration of a of a site and use review for the redevelopment of eighteen forty and eighteen forty four Folsom Street with residential uses. The proposal includes the demolition of two existing office buildings and proposes one hundred and forty four units, including studio, one, two and three bedroom units totaling one hundred and twenty four thousand seven hundred and forty nine square feet. The proposal includes a request for a height modification to allow for fifty five feet in height modification to setbacks, number of stories and bike parking standards. The applicant has requested vested rights reviewed under case number L U R twenty twenty four zero dash zero 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 seven seven and L U R twenty twenty four dash zero 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 seven eight. Okay, so as I had explained in the previous item, we'll begin with a presentation from staff followed by clarifying questions from the board, a presentation from the applicant with questions for the applicant and um, followed by a public hearing and then board deliberation. So, uh, we will begin with staff presentation, Allison.
All right, thank you for the introduction and good evening, everyone, my name is Allison Blaine, I'll be presenting this next item. In tonight's presentation, I will cover the information that was provided in staff's memo, including planning process to date, the existing site and surrounding context. A summary of the proposed project, key issues for discussion, and then conclude with the staff recommendation. The project was first presented to planning board as a concept plan in October of twenty twenty four. At that time, the board concluded that the project aligned with BVCP policies and overall were supportive of high density residential. The board did provide some suggestions, including a more cohesive connection to the internal courtyards, additional open space amenities and a simplified material palette. City council did not call up the item and the applicant proceeded with a site review application in January of twenty twenty five. Staff has reviewed the application and is recommending approval before planning board tonight. City council will have the option to call up planning board's decision, which is scheduled for next month. The site review is required based on the size of the development and requested modifications, including height modification up to fifty five feet setback modification to the rear yard, variation to the percentage of long term bike parking and the location of short term bike parking and the percentage of compact spaces. The APK has also requested vested rights. The height modification and vested rights request uh requires a decision by planning board. A user view is also required for ground floor residential in a BR one zone that is less than thirty feet from a major street. The proposed ground floor uses do not include dwelling units. And last, the site was posted and public notice was provided per code, several public comments were received and have been included in the packet. Primary concerns are related to building height and construction impacts. The subject site is located on the eastern side of Folsom Street between Canyon Boulevard and Walnut Street and is comprised of two properties located eighteen forty and eighteen forty four Folsom Street. The northern parcel is designated as high density residential, which consists of attached dwelling units with an anticipated density of more than fourteen dwelling units per acre. The southern parcel is designated as general business, which consists of a mix of business uses and states that housing is encouraged and even may be required in areas where housing is compatible with surrounding businesses and as a transition to other residential areas. The site is owned BR one, which is defined on the slide, um, the surrounding area is owned BR one to the north, south and east. That transitions to BT two along Folsom into the west and then to RH two further west. Immediately surrounding the site is high density residential to the north, commercial to the south and east and mixed residential and commercial to the west across the street from Folsom. The larger surrounding context is also quite varied and consists of office, retail and residential uses. Further east are activated commercial cores such as the twenty ninth street mall, the village shopping center and Arapaho shopping center. Further north and west, the context shifts to lower intensity mixed density residential uses and further south shifts to higher intensity commercial uses. Building form and intensity also varied in this area with one to three story buildings immediately to the south and across the street to the west. Um, the horizon west building, which is to the north, is about ten stories tall. And then the building form and uses do intensify to the east and south with taller commercial buildings, especially along canyon. Overall, the area is walkable with direct access to many services and shops. Both properties total about one point four nine acres, the existing property at eighteen forty four Folsom contains a one story brick office building constructed in the mid nineteen seventies. The existing property at eighteen forty Folsom contains a three story stucco medical office constructed in the late nineteen seventies. The buildings are set back between twenty seven and forty feet from the street with parking in the rear and the sites appear to be primarily impervious area with minimal landscaping except for the front yards. The site is impacted by the five hundred year floodplain as shown on the slide. And the site is subject to two area plans, the Boulder Valley Regional Center uh design guidelines, which were adopted by Borough in nineteen ninety eight to guide development objectives, including high quality redevelopment, walkable commercial neighborhoods, more connections, a diversity of land uses and to strengthen ties to the downtown and university. Um, these design law, uh, design guidelines provide specific plans for site, streetscape and building design and overall are more focused on building form and site design. The other area plan is the Boulder Plaza sub area plan and that was established in nineteen ninety two to address planning goals at a more detailed neighborhood level. The plan details the purpose, overall design goals, key planning concepts and character districts while providing guidance on building form and massing, site landscaping and pedestrian and vehicular circulation. The plan does envision types of uses as well, and the subject site is located in an I area identified in the plan as the Folsom transitional. The site is subject to planned connections identified in the transportation master plan or T M P. These connections include an east west multi use path connection along the northern edge of the site and a north south multi use path connection along the eastern property line. That eastern connection does span the subject site and the adjacent property to the east. Um, the two planned connections are intended to link to a greater network that connects Canyon Boulevard to Pearl Street and connects Folsom Street to twenty eighth street. Oh, nice, went too fast. Um, the site is also located on a portion of Folsom Street within a priority core arterial network. Um, preliminary design for the Folsom Street improvements began in January twenty twenty five and the recommended design was approved by city council in August of this year. The recommended design includes lane repurposing for two lanes in each direction, a protected bike lane, two way center turn lane and associated sidewalk and landscaping strip improvements. The preliminary design will be completed by early twenty twenty six, but funding has not yet been secured for final design or construction. And that brings us to tonight's proposed project, which uh is for the redevelopment of eighteen forty and eighteen forty four Folsom with one hundred and forty four dwelling units and varying size and unit type. The design features two elevated courtyards, a roof deck amenity space, private balconies and three grade level open space amenity areas and new multi use path connection. The uh only vehicle access is from Folsom Street and down the drive aisle into the parking garage. Um, whereas short term bike users can utilize the bike racks along Folsom Street with direct access from the sidewalk. Residents with bikes will primarily enter the site from the northern building entrance immediately accessible from the multi use path. This entrance also provides direct access to long term bike parking and reduces conflicts with vehicles in the garage. And primary pedestrian access will be from Folsom Street with secondary entrances to the north. ADA access is also from Folsom Street as well as the northwest and southeast parking areas. Short term access for deliveries is located adjacent to the garage entry with a loading stall and um a crosswalk positioned several feet from feet from that entry uh garage with see through uh garage door will facilitate safe and convenient access for deliveries. A total of one hundred and twenty six parking spaces are proposed and will be located within the footprint of the building. Two dedicated car share spaces are located at the southwest corner of the parking area and a total of two hundred and eighty eight bike parking spaces are proposed. Long term bike parking is included on each floor and will also provide for e bike charging. The APK has provided a transportation demand management plan that outlines the site characteristics and strategies to reduce reliance on single occupancy vehicles including eco passes, bike wash and repair stations, onsite fitness and coworking spaces, a bike fleet for residential use and then the multi use path construction. Based on the proposed height, the applicant is required to provide a minimum of twenty percent uh open space, which equates to about thirteen thousand square feet. The applicant is providing almost eighteen thousand square feet with a variety of communal and private open space areas as well as site wide landscaping. The proposed amenity areas include two elevated courtyards with outdoor grills, pool, play area and a covered exercise area. Roof deck with flex space and outdoor cooking, a courtyard with bike amenities and art, a gathering space with a pet relief area and a plaza along Folsom Street to sit and work. The subject site is within within an urban context, it's located along a major arterial uh near higher intensity residential uses and commercial nodes. The building is positioned close to the street and sidewalk, consistent with the context of the area, the area plans and the site review criteria. Building entries are well defined with double height glazing and facade recessions and modulation. Higher density and intense intensity developments are anticipated in this area with a maximum FAR of three point O. To provide a variety to the form and height of the building, the design features alternating four and five story volumes and modulated facades. High levels of transparency, material changes, landscaping buffers, art and architecture details provide visual interest in a pedestrian scale at the ground floor. And then last, the design includes a simplified material palette comprised of high quality and durable materials, including metal panel, wood look siding and dark masonry. The southern elevation opens with two elevated courtyards to provide variation to the building form and a relief to density. The northern elevation is broken up by the bike and art garden, which includes a vertical facade recession that runs up the entire height of the building. All balconies are integrated into the building form with a variety of colors to further blend into the building's mass. And facade projections and recessions on all sides of the building provide visual interest and introduce a sense of human scale. The material assignment will also complement the building's form and function. A height modification is being requested for up to fifty five feet and it is eligible for the height modification per nine two fourteen H six C and subject to additional criteria for buildings requesting a height modification. And we have uh three key issues for discussion tonight, I'll detail them in the next slides. Key issue one is the proposed project consistent with the site review criteria. Um, staff finds that the project is consistent with the criteria, it promotes alternatives to the automobile, provides um, common open space areas incorporates a variety of landscaping and building and siding design is compatible with the character of the surrounding area and the area plans. The building design successfully creates visual interest in a vibrant pedestrian experience. Key issue two is the project consistent with the use review criteria. Um, staff finds that the proposed ground floor residential is consistent with the use review criteria. Um, the ground floor residential does not consist of dwelling units, but contains residential amenities that reduce vehicle trips and lessen impacts to the surrounding area. Folsom Street is a transitional corridor and the surrounding area contains a variety of mixed uses and the activated ground floor residential use provides a uh transition between those higher and lower intensity uses and is not incompatible with the surrounding area. And a final key issue is the proposal consistent with the two area plans and staff finds that the proposal is generally consistent with both the BVRC design guidelines and the Boulder Plaza sub area plan. Um, specifically residential redevelopment is encouraged in this area and the building design is situated close to the street with screen parking provides a unified streetscape, um facilitates pedestrian and bike connections and the building mass and massing is broken down. And that brings us to the staff recommendation, which I have here on the slide. And I will now open it up for questions, thanks so much.
Great, thank you, Allison, okay. Clarifying questions from the board. I see Laura's got her hand up. I think, is that right or am I seeing? Okay, sorry, that was a, an audience member, sorry Laura, okay. Anyway, does anyone uh have clarifying questions, Claudia, you?
I can start with one at least. Um, so there's this proposed multi use path on the north side of the building. And is that going to be considered public right of way for the purposes of evaluating the height modification request?
That's correct, it's considered public realm.
Okay, and we got some guidance um last week about how we apply this criteria dealing with building form and massing and like the length of facades. Could you, could somebody from staff give us a refresher on that, I think we got some guidance on the code language saying we will consider certain things versus shell, et cetera, could we get some clarity on that?
Yeah, sure, so the building length, sorry, I'm just gonna pull up the criteria, so I have it in front of me, but the um, the building length um, number in the code is a consideration, um, it's not an absolute. Um, and I believe it's uh two hundred feet um along a public realm and then if the facade exceeds one hundred and twenty feet along a public street, then the design should incorporate some other design elements to help break up the mass. And just as a heads up, the applicant does have some additional diagrams um that they'll be sharing on the building height and length.
Kurt?
Thank you, Allison, uh, following up about the north side multi use path. It appears that the plans do not show a curb cut for that, is that correct?
That is correct, right now there's not a curb curb cut to Folsom.
And do you know why that choice was acceptable, I guess, to transportation?
Um, I think once the project starts, uh, the Folsom Street improvements get further along, that might be looked at, I don't know if transportation and mobility will look at how those Folsom Street improvements will connect to planned connections. Um, but at this point, uh, transportation staff felt that it satisfied the criteria, there's still access to the sidewalk and Folsom.
Okay, meaning access to Folsom via the sidewalk, I guess.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Um, and another question, um, the the plans show at the driveway um, i- in the 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 median then, the 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 middle of the street, it's uh, it looks like they are going to install this a median. Um, that's a tough curb delineator system is how it's marked on the plans. And I assume that transportation also looked at that and that was acceptable because that does not look at all like what we ordinarily install as a median.
Yeah, so there's gonna be, and maybe the applicant can speak more to this, but um, there's a required temporary barrier per the DCS to restrict left turns on to Folsom, so for now it'll be a right, right in, right out until um, those Folsom Street improvements are furthered along and they know the exact location of that median and center turning area. But for now, the, it'll have the temporary uh barrier, but looks like Curtis is standing up, he might be able to address and the applicant presentation.
Up to you.
You know, let's let's save it for um after your presentation.
Okay, well, I'll just follow up with the applicant, then, great. Thank you, I think that that is it.
Okay, uh, Laura, I believe you were next.
Thank you. Um, Allison, thank you for that presentation. Um, I have a couple of questions, one is in one of the public comments that was in our packet, there was a suggestion that the reason why the ground level or underground parking uh was changed is because staff did not allow the applicant to have underground parking. Can you comment on this, is there some some reason why the applicant would not be allowed to have underground parking?
Um, that, no, the short answer is no, uh, there's nothing in the code or from app, uh, the staff's perspective that would prohibit uh below grade parking.
Okay, so maybe that was a misunderstanding on on behalf of that comment.
It's possible.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do have some questions about the open space diagram and thank you for pointing me to that on page thirty three of eighty one of the applicant statement, could you, could you pull that little green and orange diagram up?
Yeah, sure, one sec.
Okay, thank you. So this is a figure um that displays just the ground level open space, not those rooftop decks uh above the parking garage or on level five. It's just what's
This one here?
Yeah, it's that little orange and green one. It's one of several diagrams on the page, yeah, thank you. Um, could you just walk us through what are those orange and green spaces? And how they correspond with the applicant's description of the different spaces?
Sure, so I'll start over from, let's see if I orient myself Folsom Street, um
Okay, I think, I think we're not seeing your screen anymore, at least I'm not.
I can see
We, yeah, we are.
Oh, huh, why am I, oh, somehow I flipped to something else, okay, all right, thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay, uh, on the west, um, here, so that this kind of, I'll try to circle with my mouse, this would be the um, the Folsom Plaza, so the entryway with some seating, um, there's some bike racks down here. Um, and as you move further north, this area um is the short term Um, and as you move further north, this area is the short term bike parking. The longer rectangle to the north would be the multi-use path and then this area here is the sort of the bike garden and art courtyard, which provides bike amenities. Uh, it's the primary bike entrance and also provides seating areas. I believe there might be a short term bike rack there. And some art. And then here on the southeast corner. This is another sort of area to gather. It includes a pet relief area, places to sit and it's near one of the entries on this this corner here. And then everything else in green would be things that count towards landscaping. The areas in white that don't count would be some of the transformers or the rain gardens, which in this case are not counting towards open space.
Okay, and can we see that whole diagram? Just, yeah, thank you. And can you tell us what those colors represent, the orange and the dark green and the light green?
Yeah, the orange would be what's considered enhanced paving. So that could be pavers, bricks, colored or scored concrete. And then the light green is the portion, I believe, the the ten percent along the right of way that can count towards open space in a site review. And then the darker green would be the site wide line landscaping.
Okay.
And if I have that wrong, I think Bill or someone can correct me when.
Okay. And do you know what of that dark green and light green landscaping that is not, you know, enhanced pavement, but is actual landscaping? How much of that is actually planted in the ground versus in planter boxes?
I probably defer to the applicant. I think most of the grade level is on the ground and more of the planters are on some of those elevated courtyards. But I'll I'll defer to the applicant to give some more specifics on that.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the applicant about that too. Thank you so much for walking us through that.
Sure.
And then I had a question about the the hardscape. It says that that in, there's a number there in that on that page for fifteen thousand four hundred square feet of hardscape. And does that? It says it includes the drive, the drives and oh, sorry, and sidewalks. When you say the drives, what what are the drives? Does that include drive aisles in the parking garage or what are the drives?
It would probably just be the, let's see if I can find a the access drive here to the south. That's just used for vehicular access, but it would not include anything that's within the footprint of the building or the garage. Um, and then it would be that the public sidewalk here on the west.
I guess I'm just trying to understand where it all is because that number is bigger than the number of landscaping and open space on the site. But I'm just not seeing a lot of sidewalks and drive areas.
Well, and so the sidewalks and I think the table might be a little confusing, the sidewalks and the drive aisles would not count towards open space. The only hardscape areas that can count towards open space are, that have to meet the definition of enhanced paving and there is a variety of ways to meet that. So that's why in this other diagram, they're whited out. Whoopsies. Because it's not meant to count towards the open space. I think the figure is just meant to show the difference between building coverage and the remaining site.
Yeah, no, I understand that the the hardscape is not the open space and that the enhanced paving is open space, but it's not considered hardscape. That is a little confusing. I just am not seeing where all of the sidewalks and drive aisles are that add up to being more than the open space because the number that's provided for the hardscape is I don't know, like a thousand square feet bigger than the number provided for the ground level open space.
Maybe I'm maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, but the fifteen thousand does include hardscape open space and drive aisles and sidewalks.
Oh, I think it's the hardscape open space too. Okay, all right. That makes more sense. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and then just one more question about the the, well, I guess two more questions about the open space. So of those ground level open spaces that you walked us through in that diagram, how many of them are tucked under an overhang? Which ones are tucked under the overhangs?
I believe that the a portion of the southeast corner is tucked under and this kind of green area is outside. The northern area is open to the sky. My mouse is not working and then portions of the the most, the western most point are covered by facade projections, but are also exposed and open to the sky.
Thank you. And then there were some illustrations of the north, south and east elevation open spaces on the ground level. And there seems to be some kind of like metal mesh or perforated metal. Yeah, what is, what is that and what's behind it?
That's the screening and ventilation for the parking.
Okay, and and how close are the parking spaces to that mesh?
That's a good question. I don't know if I have the exact numbers, but I might be able to get a rough sense here. I I don't have that number off the top of my head. I don't know if the applicant has that, but I can try to get that information for you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, I think that that is all of, oh, um, just one more question regarding the community cycles input. They said that in their letter or one of their letters that policy two point eleven E two appears to not be met because of the compact vertical bike racks. And I just was curious about staff's analysis of that. Do staff agree that that policy is not met or disagree?
I probably need to double check on that comment. But I can take a look and refresh. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you, Laura. ML, I believe you're up next.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Allison. Um, I have just a few questions. So the zoning is BR one. That's consistently across both lots. Is that correct?
Correct.
And when I looked at the BR one zoning in the code, so residential is not one of the standard uses, but it can be. Tell me how residential is encouraged in a BR one. What does the zoning say about that?
Well, it's allowed through the use table. There is a path forward for ground floor residential. And the if if all the residential were above, you know, on the second level, there wouldn't be a use review. The only trigger for the use review is that it's the residential is less than thirty feet from a major arterial in this case Folsom Street. So it's consistent with the underlying zoning and in the case that they have a path forward through the use review and it's consistent with the use review criteria.
Okay. So along that same line, the land use on the northern part is HR and on the southern part is GB. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then the whole site is zone VR. So where are the business uses? Did I miss them? Do we have business uses?
There are no proposed commercial uses for this project.
So what is the staff's thinking about meeting sort of the zoning and land use? Business?
Yeah, the so the use review criteria doesn't require consistency with the zoning. That's that was taken out of the use review criteria. It is consistent though with the underlying land use designation, which high density residential encourages residential and even general business encourages and says housing may even be required in areas that are near commercial areas or as a transition to other residential. So I think looking at at the site and the surrounding uses that ground floor residential is compatible.
So having no business use at all on the site is is not, is not a concern in these in these zonings.
We're reviewing what what the applicant is proposing and they're proposing residential. And it's allowed through the zoning, so it's staff found it consistent with the criteria.
Okay. Second question has to do with the Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan. It has a section five point two point three, which is titled Required Plan Elements in Development Review. And oh, in that section talks about heights. Heights may reach a maximum fifty five feet where the development provides for one, protection of views from existing residential or public areas. And two, buildings are stepped to maintain the pedestrian scale of the street. So what do we know about the loss of views? This, this is specifically pointing to protection of views from existing residential. Do we know how many residential units are losing their views?
I don't have that information, no.
So what was your thought of the project meeting that required? Required plan elements from that Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan?
I mean, staff is reviewing the project inconsistent, consistency with the the plans as as a whole, generally consistent. The the area plan does actually encourage residential in this area and says that additional height may be requested or granted if it demonstrates it meets criteria such as the site review criteria. So in looking at the site review criteria and the area plan as a whole, staff finds it's consistent with the Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan.
So this particular one that states that it's a required piece is not being considered as necessarily being required. Is that what I'm understanding?
The plan is looked at as a whole and staff finds it generally consistent. So it was not looking at each individual aspect of the area plan specifically.
Okay. So let me see. I think that might be my and as far as stepping down at the public side, can you pull up those elevations on the I guess it'd be the Folsom, maintain the pedestrian scale?
Yes, I can do that. Wait one sec. Is this a helpful perspective? Is this?
Is this, is this a is this like if I'm walking along Folsom?
This would be if you're across the street looking across Folsom.
Right. If I'm walking along Folsom, it talk, this particular talks about the pedestrian scale at the street. Do you have something at in that area? Is there a perspective in that area?
Um, I'm not sure if there's a perspective from the street at that area, but if the applicant has one, they might be able to share when they present.
Okay, so what I'm seeing is what's that at heights all along Folsom? Is that?
The the maximum height will be fifty five feet, probably at that northeast, sorry, northwest corner. But along the street, it does step back to four stories, has a fifth story setback, sort of on that whole corner.
Right.
So.
And it's a tall first story. Oh, so yeah, I see what you're saying. You kind of first two is two, so it's a total of four. Okay, it's hard to see. Hopefully they have some perspectives of the pedestrian experience. Yeah, I think those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, ML. Mason?
Yeah, I really appreciate the staff's analysis. I don't have a ton of questions. I was trying to count and this might be a question for the applicant. But I was looking at the bike storage maps and where everything lays out. I'm seeing six cargo bike cages in the middle of the two this fifth floor. Are those e-bike ready? The e-bikes are kind of laid out differently.
Yeah, I'll probably defer to the applicant on that.
Then I don't have any additional questions for staff.
Okay, any other? Claudia?
Very quickly, what is the setback from Folsom that's being proposed?
I think it's twenty. I'm just trying to get the sorry, I've had the setbacks in front of me and I lost them. Yeah, it's twenty.
Okay, so in the use review, the what triggers use review in BT, uh, let's see, wait a second. In BR one is residential within thirty feet of a major street. Is that correct?
Correct.
So they're off by about ten feet there.
Yeah, so that's why we have to do the use review. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other clarifying questions for staff? Okay. Hey, I'm gonna suggest we do a quick break now and then we'll be able to go through the rest of this rest of the agenda versus breaking it up after the public hearing. Okay, so you guys get another it's seven seven fifty, we'll return at seven fifty five in nine minutes. Okay. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order and I'm going to uh take care of one piece of business that. I am inconsistent about at the beginning. Of uh site reviews and use reviews, and that is asking board members. If anyone has a conflict of interest. A potential conflict of interest or any ex parte communications that they need to divulge. So if you do, you can raise your hand or shout out. Otherwise, we'll carry on. Okay. All right, um, so we're now gonna hear from the applicant, the applicant has fifteen minutes tonight. Uh, and uh just. Like the last time uh this applicant was here, I'm going to suggest that you may have heard some questions that you want to answer. Go ahead and go through your presentation and let us ask those questions. Um, after your presentation is concluded versus just versus shortening your presentation. Okay, thank you very much, away it goes.
Great, thank you, I'm Bill Holicky with Coburn Architecture. And um, we'll walk you through the presentation here at the end, Chris Jacobs, the applicant, will jump in with a few comments um from the ownership team. So uh, we were gonna start with the site like we normally do, but everybody knows where this site is, and I think Allison's covered it pretty well, it's really well served by. Transit modes and services, and it's a great place to put a lot of people to help bring um twenty-four seven activity to our commercial core. Allison also showed this slide, so without going into too much detail, it's worth noting that this is the highest density zone in the city at three O. And then it transitions to the BT two to the west and then further down to the residential of the RH two further west. We were in front of you a concept plan, and as far as I'm concerned, that was a really fertile conversation. Um, this is what we showed you, and you can see that um one thing to point out is that ramp down to the underground parking garage wraps the entire site, comes in back from the east. So Allison already kind of touched on a bunch of this, but it was a really good conversation at planning board, generally. Planning board has Allison illustrated in her presentation and packets, supported the, the use of residential here, they supported the density, they supported the height. Um, they said it was consistent with area plans, but you did have some really good comments and it, it pretty dramatically changed the project. One was the concern about providing so much parking here. We had a hundred and ninety-one parking spaces. And we had a big underground parking garage and then half of the first level was parking and the concern was, hey, you know, can we do a little bit less? Get away with a little less parking here, so we'll get into that in a second. Um, there was concern about how you got into the building, how the building addressed the street. Uh, talked about the northern facade a little bit, and then a pet relief area, some other smaller things, uh were also considered, we, we took notes on all of those. So we thought we could get into the changes that we made here, uh they're all kind of pointed out on this. Three D model, which we can bring back up for any specific questions later. To first talk about the parking, um the top was what we had a concept, so we had this underground parking that was the whole site. And then the back half of the first floor was parking. And that was a, as you pointed out, a lot of carbon and a lot of parking spaces for a spot that's really well served by walking and bikes and transit. So um, Element was able to go back and figure out how to get the product, project financed. With a very different level of parking, so we had a hundred and ninety-one spots, now we have a hundred and twenty-six spaces, that's less than one space per unit. Which is really cool, it's very rare for a developer to be able to do that. So we're excited about that, and as has been pointed out, some of that is actually car share and other things, so it's even less than um than it seems like. What that did, and this was a suggestion you guys had, there's two things that occur when we pull the parking out of grade. The first is that it takes the left or western or at grade courtyard and puts it on top of the parking podium. We'll show you that in a second, and the other thing that it does is um. It allows for a future reuse of that parking, so this is the new parking. Uh layout, which is what you suggested, hey, just, you know, behind the entry, bring the parking up to grade and do a lot less of it, which is what we did. Um, and then this would allow that some of that parking to go away and be infill units later, so if in the future. We can get away with even less parking spaces, we can add another twenty, twenty-five units around the perimeter of this thing. And still have space for car storage for autonomous cars at night or for, you know, just less parking, that kind of thing. It also has the impact of lowering the amount of paved area for cars between the driveways, the ramps. And the parking spaces from seventy thousand square feet to thirty-nine thousand square feet. So good suggestion and made a massive impact on the way the building works. Oops. Trying to move forward, there we go. Um, the next was the change to the western side, um we were trying to put five stories on the western side of the project along Folsom. Folsom's the highest part of the site, so what that did was effectively squish all the stories really tight. The other thing we had was the first floor, the building entry was three feet or so below the sidewalk. And that was discussed, it was discussed internally with staff, and it's really just not the right way to do an urban plan. So we pulled units out of the second floor of the building. Um, the other thing that we had, and we'll show you that in a second, the other thing we did was we um, you know, in keeping with the BVRC. Uh, we said, okay, well, can we create a little more um, a, a smaller scale along Folsom? So the right-hand side of the project where you see the, the five-story element, that was reduced, so here's the new version. And the new version has a uh upper floor setback for most of the upper level. The other thing it does is it combines levels one and two into one level that we can now pull up out of grades, now the entry to the building is right at the sidewalk level. And it's only four stories on Folsom, so the first story is about a story and a half. So provides a really good and appropriate urban transition for the building, an entry, the co-working is all there. So it's a really nice human scale, and then there's only three stories above it, only two of which are out at the street and one is pushed back. So um, I think maybe ML was talking about the, the human scale, but this was the intent of these changes. Was to change the perceptive scale along the street, make it feel a lot more comfortable. So this is a resultant site plan, I do have a diagram that we sent in very similar to what we sent in last week. And I have copies of it here if anyone's interested, this is the heights of the roofs with key codes. So everything on the five stories is blue, orange steps down a story and green is one story portion of the building, so hopefully that kind of clarifies. The mass of the building, and if you want the handout, I do have it. So here's how you get in and out of the building, we talked a little bit about better arrivals. As Allison pointed out, you know, we had this bike path that we are gonna put in, but it kind of doesn't go anywhere, and it's likely not to go anywhere for quite a while. Because of the landlocked nature of the eastern side of it. So we utilize that um to put in a bike only entrance, it's a pedestrian bike entrance on the north side of the project, and we'll show you what that looks like. But it got really exciting to us because now we've separated the use uh entries for the, for the mode, mode types. On the western side is where you get in for pedestrians, the cars are completely separate, you can see in the orange. And then the bikes have their own entry to the north, right into the bike storage room and the bike workshop and all of the, that stuff that supports their use. We also then coordinated that with the open spaces at grade, and I know um there were a lot of questions about this, so I'll just explain what we were gonna say to that, to Mark's point. And then um I can answer more questions later, there's three different main gray level open spaces and I'll walk through each one. So the first one is on the front of the building, and there's a little key plan for each one of these in yellow. With a little arrow that shows where we're looking, so this is looking at the south side of the Folsom elevation. Um, this is the main entry to the building, there's a little covered waiting area there, um it's nice to get out of the sun in Colorado. Um, I would say out of the rain, but that's much less of a concern. Uh, but it's a little sheltered area for hanging out or, or meetings, and then if I move a little bit to the north on Folsom. We have um, the, the co-working area, so this is showing that sort of protected outdoor area. In that twenty, it's a little bit further in this area, it's more like a twenty-eight foot setback from the right-of-way line. And this is where people, that's like a third space, right, so it's where residents. And um people co-working and visitors and the community can kind of interact, but it's still a little shielded by these planters. And to answer the question about the planters, this is the only area on the first floor where we really have raised planters, everything else is at grade. And then the short-term bike parking to the left there. This is the north side, so again, you're looking at that bike entry, which is also serving as our, our art plaza. And the reasoning behind this, waiting for the site update. Was um, you know, we thought that, hey, someday there are gonna be people moving on this bike path, hopefully, and it's, it's sort of. You know, the idea of a moment of surprise is really cool. And so along this building, we said, okay, well, if we can make this entry for the bikes. But we can also make it this little art moment, so you don't know it's there and you hop on the bike path and you ride along and. Oh my God, like what's this, right, so there's this little sculpture garden, we've got a twenty-three foot setback, um push the building in. And then we've got the corridor there with glass on it, so we want to do a five-story mural, or sorry, be a four-story mural. That kind of goes up through all these glass corridor walls, and when, you know, dust starts to happen and it lights up, you can see this art appear inside the building, so we were really excited about that. Along with this bike-first entry location. And we have no problem with a curb cut on Folsom, by the way, the Folsom improvements are showing exactly how transportation wants them, so if there's any changes that need to be made. No, no, we're, we're happy to make them. This is the southeast corner, so this is the pet relief area, which again was a suggestion from planning board, I think. Um, Laura made that suggestion, it was a really good one, people do have dogs. And uh, the idea was to create an area that was specific to them. And it's all grass, this is the area where we have that sod which is for the pet relief. It also happens to be the place where you do your move-ins, right, so if you need to um. To load in or load out, if you're moving in or moving out, there's a specific loading zone, there's an elevator right there. And there's a place to do that, a little place to sit and rest, which I know I need when I move in. So then to move up, open space on level two, because we brought the garage up to grade or the parking up to grade. Now all of the main uh common open space is at the same level. Which allowed us to join it together, and one of the things we heard from planning board was make it more accessible to each other, make it more linked up. And uh make sure it's accessible to all the residents, I think ML, that was one of your comments, make sure everybody gets access to this. So it's right off the quarters, everybody does have access to this, and it's programmed differently, it all joins together outside, you don't have to go inside the building to go anywhere in this, in this U. So this first one is looking at the eastern side, this is the more social side. So this has a pool and it has a cook, cookout area and all that kind of stuff, the other side has um. It's uh, now we're on the west side looking south. And believe it or not, one of the people in our office actually goes to the dentist that's in the current building, so this is a picture we actually took from the dentist's second floor window. Um, and so this is a more contemplative or private, you know, these are little reading areas and spots for smaller groups to gather on this side. And then we do have the fifth story, which is addressing the survey criteria. Of having an upper level open space for people in the building to see views if there's views on the site, and it also helps us break down the scale at Folsom. So this is just the diagram showing all those different open spaces and how they interact with each other, every single one is programmed. Everyone is different and they each serve a purpose. Uh, and we worked pretty hard on making sure they each had a function and were, you know, um really attractive and welcoming places to be. The other thing we worked at that wasn't um shown was the eastern side of the building, so when we came to concept, we really hadn't talked much about that. And we realized, and I think someone pointed out, that we hadn't included in our plan the north-south path, path on the eastern property line, we intended to, we had just missed it. It's there now, protected. Um, when it eventually goes in, right now it's landlocked, but when it goes in. This side of the building will be a face of the building and rather uh differently than all the other buildings, we don't want this to be a back. So we want it to be a four-sided building, there's an entry on this side, which is part of the reason we put the loading zone here. Because it serves as an entry off that eventual bike path. In terms of the area plan compliance, a lot of what they talked about, as Allison mentioned. Our walkability, bringing the buildings to the street, trying to make that pedestrian realm, right now, none of the buildings really do that. So the change in this building will be to bring that front um to the street to create that pedestrian experience. And hopefully that, you know, essentially breaks the block in half, so I've walked this many times, especially like coming back from a CU game and, and walking back north. And it's, this is a grim block, like all the other blocks are pretty nice. And then McGuckins gets a little challenging and this one's pretty grim, and then as soon as you get past this, it gets interesting again. So hopefully this provides a little oasis of pedestrian interest and helps um. You know, people through that gap that's a little less walkable. The north side was something that we really hadn't given enough attention to, uh concept to be blunt. It was sort of blank and it was sort of long. And we're sort of stuck with it because it's a three O FAR zone. And it, there are these really narrow, really deep lots, so it's anticipated and you can see from the other buildings in the area that the buildings essentially fill up the lot. Um, that would be fine, except for the fact that we happen to have this, this multi-use path. So we put it on the north side to increase the separation between our building and the, the folks to the north. So we put it on the north side to increase the separation between our building and the, the folks to the north, to help give them a more space. And then we really worked to break that down and, and realizing that, yes, the two hundred feet is a suggestion, we wanted to, um, really, really work to make this as good as we could. So, and I have a handout for this as well. We've really worked to modulate that side of the building. And this is a diagram that shows the planes. The biggest relief is the magenta plane. So that's at that art, um, cutout. That goes back twenty-three feet. We have other areas that go back quite a bit as well. And the whole thing kind of moves in and out. It's really broken into two parts. And again, with that art, um, court in the middle, to hopefully provide that sort of, you know, excitement for somebody who's coming down the bike path, like you get halfway through and like, hey, this is something really cool and different. And this little caught moment of art, um, on the north side of this building aligning bike path. And then this is the building. We, we provided you this rendering, a concept, um, felt we needed to here too, just so you could see the changes. This is showing all these buildings sort of setback in a suburban fashion, um, which is what they are now. And then our building is pulled forward to hopefully make that pedestrian realm. Um, and you can see that it's really reading as a pretty pedestrian scaled thing. And to zoom in closer, oop, not yet. Cause I'm going to skip this, cause Allison talked about the compliance with the area plans. We can go back to this if there's questions. So this is that, that building. We're looking right at the northwest corner of that. And I'll get rid of that little thing. So this is again, trying to provide that pedestrian scale. We've really worked on the first floor of this building and made it much more welcoming. It's more generous. It has that, you know, that roof to give you that feeling of the outdoor room. And then really working on the feeling of the bike path, so that when you get down there, you get a, a pretty cool moment. And with that, um, I'm going to turn, turn it over.
Two minutes.
Okay, Chris.
You're up. Thanks, Bill. Um, as you can see, we spent the last year diligently incorporating your feedback as well as neighborhood input. Um, and while many of the aspects have changed, the overall intent of our proposal remains the same, uh, to create much-needed housing along this vibrant core architectural network, to activate the Folsom Street frontage in this transition corridor, and to offer a mix of Studio One, Two, and Three bedroom apartments, and to help fulfill Boulder's aspiration for walkable, transit-oriented fifteen-minute neighborhoods. I'll close our presentation with a summary of our TDM plan, along with some proposed revisions to the conditions of approval. First, our TDM plan, uh, we're creating new connections. Eighteen forty-four will include a new sidewalk, a new multi-use path along the north side of the property, and dedication of land along the east side of the property for a future multi-use path. Lots of bike parking, two hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces. Uh, we're planning a fleet of bikes for residents to use. It'll have shopping baskets, seven traditional and three e-bikes. Our, as mentioned, our car parking has been significantly reduced, um, based on your feedback from concept. Uh, and of course, we will be following the Sump principles. Uh, we're planning to dedicate two parking spaces for car share. Uh, and we'll be participating in the NICO Bus Pass program and providing ECO passes to residents for three years. Regarding these conditions of approval, um, we actually have a few requests, um, for amendment to staff's, uh, recommended conditions. Um, and there's no controversy here. It's just that we received. Am I out of time? Okay. Great. Um, and there's no controversy here. It's just that we received these conditions last night. So we had some, some proposed things to suggest. Uh, the first thing is we'd like to offer a new condition of an additional twenty percent. Bike parking spaces would be wired for charging, but not subject to space requirements. Looking at condition three, we're proposing the northern multi-use path that we're constructing. That results in a dead end. And until the connection can be made to Twenty-Sixth Street, we were hoping the board would consider a reservation instead of a, uh, public access easement. Yeah, thank you. And then under condition five, there's a financial guarantee for the cost of providing ECO passes. We were hoping that that would be required prior to certificate of occupancy rather than building permit. And then the last one is condition six. We're requesting that the public improvements, uh, be required to also receiving certificate of occupancy rather than during building permit. The way it's written right now is it's requiring us to put all these public improvements in before we build the building. And we feel there's going to be a lot of negative impacts to those improvements. It'd be better to build the building and then do the public improvements. So thank you for these, uh, considering these changes and we welcome your questions. Thank you.
Great. Thanks to the applicant. Before we go any further, these, can you point us to the page in the packet with the conditions as, as proposed by staff that the applicant has just proposed modification of?
Yeah.
Either memo page or packet page?
Yeah, I just need to find the, my memo tab again.
Right.
I've lost it.
Yep, it's on page one fourteen of the PDF, which would be packet page. Yes, sixteen of one fifty-seven. And these conditions have been out for about ten days.
Okay. So I'm sorry, this was. Okay, memo page what?
Uh, memo page sixteen. And packet page one eighteen of two fifty-nine.
Okay, thank you. So everybody got that? I'm, I'm just slow on this. Okay. Um, we're now going to clarify and questions from the board to the applicant. I think there's going to be some. So who's got some ready? And if I, um, let me open my. Anyone? Okay, Mason?
Uh, thank you for your presentation. I think you heard my question earlier. It was really more about, uh, which of the parking, bike parking is, uh, e-bike ready? Cause it looked like there was only three or something from the diagram that were clear, but.
Yeah, that's why we just proposed to have a condition that made it, uh, twenty-five percent. So, an additional twenty percent, yes.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, an additional twenty percent. So yeah, we, um, you've heard me say this before. Yes, I think that's a miss. We want to make sure that people can charge their bikes. And, um, I will note that Community Cycles sent the letter in June. We met with them, um, based on a new letter in support. There's been some changes, but this is one of the things that didn't get picked up after we met with them. So we'd like to make that modification. If you don't put it as a condition, we're just going to do it. So, but we just wanted to offer it as a condition.
Sure. Thank you, Mason. ML?
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you applicant for your presentation. I have two questions. First one is regarding the perviousness of the site. What percent of the site is pervious? It looks like most of it's paved.
Bear with me one second, because I do have those numbers. I'm just going to look at it quick. We have eleven percent of the site is pervious surface. The bulk is the building. And then there is another, say fifteen thousand of impervious surface outside the building. So forty, sixty split for the area that's not covered by the building, give or take.
Right. So this is five hundred-year flood, et cetera. How is the site precipitation being managed?
Can I ask our civil engineer to speak to that? Is that okay?
Oh, Mark, is that okay?
That's completely fine. Yeah. This is, this is time for the applicant team, the most appropriate person on the applicant team to answer any questions. So introduce yourself again.
Chairboard, Curtis Stevens with Sinidis Group, uh, civil engineer. And, um, yeah, we had a, a very extensive, uh, discussion about the drainage design on this site with the city engineers, because it's unique in that right now it pump, it's mostly paved right now. And water gets pumped up to Folsom, which is not, um, really allowed. So with redevelopment, it was a, a unique design. And we actually accomplished something on this project that is something the city's been trying to do, but we never get to, which is infiltrate our runoff back into the ground. It's a city, you know, current standard that goal. But most projects, either we have clay soil or we're too close to below-grade building facilities. Um, so this site actually has really suitable gravel soils for infiltration. And in the southeast corner, there's a large rain garden on the project. And that is what it is, is it's an area to capture the stormwater, treat it with water quality treatment. It's got a filtration system. But then due to the cobble soil, the water will, um, infiltrate from there instead of, uh, flowing off-site. So right now, half the site flows into the neighbor to the east and half gets pumped up to Folsom. So anyway, we, yeah, it's kind of a.
So I'm hearing you say that, um, it's the dog park area that is basically, uh, going to be recharging the groundwater? Is that what you're saying? It's going down and it's recharging the groundwater from that location?
Correct. And it's, it's actually the area south of the, um, dog park. Is the dog park on the, yeah.
Yeah, it's not the dog park itself, but it's just around.
Right, yeah. It's kind of around where the dog park is. Um, we actually don't want people on the rain garden because it compacts the soil and impacts the function of these things. Um, but we've done extensive infiltration testing on the property, uh, over multiple years, groundwater monitoring and a lot of safety factor analysis in this thing. It's, it's.
You've got it figured out.
It's a, yeah, it's a big improvement and.
Yeah, both, uh, the pervious, the pervious surface amount is improved and the stormwater is dramatically improved. And Chris can talk about that for another hour and a half if you want.
No, I have a second question. It's more architectural. So what's happening at the parking edge around the building? I understand the parking is all at grade now. And I, so what do we see if we're walking around the building when we're not on the Folsom side?
Oh, okay. I think I understand the question and please correct me if I start to speak to something else. So for three sides, you don't see any parking really. The Folsom obviously has the lobby entry, co-working, package room, all that kind of stuff. The north side, we have the art in the middle, but then we have screen walls. Um, I can show that.
Right, I'd like to see that.
Yep, I can show that. Give me a second. Sorry, flipping rapidly. Yep, here we go. So on the right-hand side, you can see, we worked with the, um, the landscape department, the city to work on that. So we've got grasses and plants in front of the screen walls. And then we have actual vines that are going to grow up the screens.
So those gray boxes are actual, they're screens? They're not just solid gray walls?
No, no, they're screens and that's providing the purchase for the vines.
Okay. And the cars are then parked right against that? That's the parking lot?
That's correct. And that was another question that somebody had, uh, on the south side. The, the cars essentially go up to the screens, which is why the screens are there. This north side is the place that we have the vines growing because it's more protected from the sun, so they won't get baked as much.
So is that detail, um, to have the parking area basically open with screens? Is that, I don't see that on the left-hand side there of the stair and all, but is, is it intended to be that same kind of detail? Where you get some relief, you get some, you know, visual texture?
Yeah, that's right. It, it starts again. So the, the solid area is the mural on the right-hand side of that court. And then the darker area on the left-hand side are both bike rooms and bike service rooms. But then they stop and I can, I can show you. I have a, don't, don't just believe my words here. I can actually show you the thing. If this will catch up. I think I killed it. There we go. Thank you for bearing with me. I'm just going to pull up the, there we go. So you can see, where is it easiest to see here?
Oh, I see.
Right. So that this is, uh, the bike room. This is parking again. But again, the, the, this side of the building modulates in and out. And so this is a more solid thing. This is the screen with the vines. This is more solid screen with the vines. So again, the idea was as you ride along this or bike along, walk along it, it's changing every five seconds, every ten seconds. So there's something to keep your interest. We didn't want it to be unbroken, unchanged.
So on the, on the south, we have, um, is that kind of gray line going across there? Is that screens?
Here? There's no screens on the south.
In.
Right here?
One, on the other side of that first row of parking.
Oh, here? Yeah, that's a, that's a, a screen, yes.
Okay.
But the first row of parking is open to the drive, so that the drive can, you know, again, we're trying to reduce the amount of paving as much as possible. So making the entry drive and the fire truck, because that has to be there for fire service as well as deliveries, loading trash. Making it do double duty reduces the amount of paving on the site.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Checking here for, okay, any, uh, Kurt?
Sorry, getting back to a front.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Uh, one material question. You talk about this wood look material.
Yep.
What is that actually made of?
I was hoping you were going to ask. I'm all excited about this. Okay. So it's a material made out of rice husk. It looks like wood. You can stain it like wood. You can cut it like wood. You nail it like wood. Um, I didn't really believe it when we first got our hands on it a year ago. I put it up on a fake wall in my backyard and so far it's been awesome. So it's, it looks like wood, but it's, um, it's all made with recycled materials. So that's what it is. It's really cool and it doesn't weather.
And it's basically organic material. I think I actually asked this before now that you have the, the answer, but sorry about that. So it's mostly organic material, but then with some binder.
It's like a, it's like, uh, yeah, they, they do recycled vinyl that binds it. So it's, um, it's a recycled recyclable material that's all essentially binding rice husk.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really cool.
Okay, great. The next question is back to ML's question about the screening of the parking.
Yep.
I'm just curious why you went with screening as opposed to just a full enclosure? I mean, I guess you need to have a certain amount of ventilation, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can, you can mechanically ventilate a garage. And I think this is probably, you know, there's different opinions on the best way to go. We think that allowing natural light into the garage makes it feel more comfortable, especially for folks that maybe are less confident walking through a parking garage. Lighting makes a big difference. Painting the ceiling makes a big difference. But having it open to the outside, so people feel like they're not in an enclosed space is a big safety consideration for folks. So we tend to err on the side of screening, because it lets light in and less some visual connection in. I think that you could make a case that a solid wall, especially on the north side, might be better, uh, and the people on the bike path then wouldn't have to see the cars. And I think we'd probably be okay with either one, but we just felt like the safety concerns and the perceived comfort in the garage sort of tipped the scales in that direction. Gives a little more, uh, light and air to the vines as they're trying to grow too, but that's probably a small concern.
Okay, great. Thank you. One other detail, the, looking at this picture, there's the crossing of the driveway in and the sidewalk. Is that a raised? Is that raised? Does that, does the sidewalk maintain its elevation across that?
Yes.
Right, okay. Thank you.
It's like a driveway ramp condition. That's what the city wanted, more like a driveway, not a.
Yep, great. Cool. Okay. And then last question, Bill, can you go back to the, 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 the transportation, the, 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 the routes within the building? Uh, all those dotted lines?
Yeah, give me a moment. Got the right keys going now, so won't be quite as hard. There we go.
Yep, fantastic. There you go. Can you talk through, if I'm coming in with a bike and I'm going upstairs?
Yes.
So I'm taking the elevator up. Can you talk how I would get there?
There's sort of two answers to that. There's the current answer and the future answer. So we have two elevators. One is near the front and one is near the back. The, if you wanted to come in directly to the elevator, the easiest way in probably is right through the lobby, which, you know, we're bike-friendly. We want that. That's great. You can also come in through the bike entry room in, in the bike court and then just go straight into the door, which is right here on the drive aisle. So generally in our experience, traffic is moving really slow in these one-level garages. And you can just bike through here and go right through this door and up the elevator. The future answer is we would expect people to come down this bike path, get onto the north-south bike path and go right into this bike and, um, loading, unloading elevator, which is really for move-in and move-outs and for bikes for the future path. So, sort of splitting the difference between all these different things, um, using two elevators to try to make it better than one. So, sort of splitting the difference between all these different things, um, using two elevators to try to make it better than one.
Okay, but it will definitely be possible and reasonable, I guess, to come in just the front door.
Absolutely.
That obviously is the most direct.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's where all the short-term bike parking is too, um, on both sides of the door. So if, you know, visitor forgets their lock, you know, which happens quite a bit, um, you just go in the front door, go up the elevator and you're good. And there's bike storage rooms on the upper levels as well. So the expectation is that a lot of people will do that. There was a really good observation about cargo bikes, which is. You don't always wanna take your cargo bike in, unload your cargo bike and then carry your stuff upstairs, especially if it's like groceries. So lots of people wanna just wheel their bike with their stuff in it to their door, unload it and then drop their bike on their storage, on their floor. So it's all set up for that. Pretty hefty part of the, of the um, the rental sales pitch, I assume.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Hey, thanks Kurt. Um, Laura, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you and, and thank you for the presentation to the applicant team. Uh, I just have a few questions that deal with um, the site. And I'm trying to understand if there are constraints on the site that preclude certain design choices. Or if it, it really is just a design choice of balancing different features that are all desirable and you had to make some, some choices.
Sure.
So the first is the underground parking, um, that that was, that design choice was changed. Was there some constraint on the site that forced that choice or, or was it a choice?
Um, it was suggested at concept plan pretty strongly by this board and uh, the, both the reduction of the overall parking. Um, so we had a hundred ninety-one spaces for a hundred and eighty-something units. And it was pushed pretty hard by this board that we reconsider that. So we're pretty proud of the fact that we now have a hundred and twenty-six spaces for a hundred and forty-four units at. Um, pretty good emotional stress for the developer to be blunt, but they were able to pull it off. And then it was also suggested by this board that that would allow um, the parking to be at grade, so we took your advice.
Okay, I do remember that pretty much everybody supported the parking reduction. I don't remember which board members exactly um, were strongly in favor of. Not having underground parking. I didn't go back and look at the video. Do you happen to remember which board members?
Well, I know that.
How many, how many board members?
Sure, I know that. I believe Kurt is the one who first mentioned it, but I believe there was general agreement, um, as you guys kind of say, yeah, what he said. Um, but the other thing it allowed us to do is greatly reduce the amount of paved area on the site. Because now instead of having to come all the way to the east side to get down, because that's the lowest part of the site. Now we don't have to have that big ramp and all of that paving. So that also allowed for things like the pet relief area. Um, the enhanced um, eastern side, the rain gardens for a nicer um, stormwater infiltration. So. Overall, it was a change that had a lot of positive impacts on the site.
Okay, thanks for helping us understand that decision. Um, similar question about the courtyards, you know, the site review criteria, talk about having. Uh, a landscaped courtyard, if you wanna have a height modification, that, that has like seven factors that they list in there. Um, is there anything that prevented you from having a courtyard that met all of those factors? I did read with a lot of interest. Um, the materials in your pocket about how you see different spaces on the site contributing to those factors in different ways. But my question is there, is there anything that would preclude having all of those factors in one courtyard on the site?
Um, it's a good question and I think there's multiple answers. The first is from a design standpoint, it's, it's much more desirable to have the courtyards where they currently are. The reason for that is the lowest level of residential units is on floor two. And you want those courtyards to have residential energy around them. You don't want them to have parking around them. So if we were to drop a courtyard to grade, we would first of all screw up the parking and make the site plan a lot more paved. But the second thing is that that courtyard would now be surrounded by parking. And I think we've talked tonight a lot about what that feels like to have a screen next to a bike path. It would be considerably worse to have your primary open space next to cars. So this allows the, the common areas, the amenity spaces and the residential units to be the level that touches that courtyard, which is a great improvement. It also shortens them, so now they're um, instead of being fifty-two feet tall, they're forty-two feet tall, which I think is an improvement as well. Um, we also feel that uh, it, it allows for the residential, the folks living in the units to feel like it's their space. One of the things we have to understand about urban dwellings is that if we want people to use them, they don't have yards. They're not single-family homes. They don't have. Uh, townhome protected yards. They have shared spaces. And it's one thing to say, okay, you know, you're living in a hundred-person community and we want you to live simply and small. It's another thing to say, and by the way, all your open space is accessible to every passerby. And that's just not a recipe for people to have a positive environment to live in. So by putting these on the second floor, they're still connected to the street. You can still see in because they're right on the drive and it's, it's not very far back. But it allows people to feel like they have space that's their own, which is the primary deterrent for people living in multifamily homes. From, so from an experience standpoint, it's pretty important to the way people actually live if we expect them to live in this kind of an environment.
Okay, thank you. And then same question for the um, building facade on the north that fronts the multi-use path. That is three hundred and eight feet, I think, rather than two hundred. Um, which is the, the factor that is listed in the code. Um, was there anything that precluded you from keeping your building facades to the length that is desirable or listed as a best practice in the code?
Yes, the FAR allowed on the site is three point O FAR. And that's what the BVRC and the Plaza Area Plan expect. They both list this as a high-density site. And that's, this is the highest density zone in the city. As drawn, this building is a one point nine FAR. We're not even coming close to what the code expects in terms of our residential yield on the site. If we were to make it two hundred feet, we would drop that FAR to about one point two because we'd lose the back part of the building. And there's no way to get access to that building. We couldn't have that second building have a front door in the street. We couldn't have it have fire access in the same way. We couldn't have it um, have a, a reasonable entry or connection to Folsom. So the only way to do, all of the sites in this area are set up to be long and thin, so they have to be this length. If there wasn't a bike path there, it wouldn't be an issue. But because that was an unintended aspect of when the site review criteria went in, that a site like this would then not be compliant with the suggestion. That's why council made it a suggestion. So even with the building length that we have. All the modulation, the reductions, um, all of the things that we've done have taken a three point O FAR site and turned it into a one point nine FAR site. So it's really the only way that we can thread the needle between what's expected and, and in the code, what's requested in the area plans. And what's suggested in the site review criteria.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Does anyone have additional questions? Okay, I've got a couple. Um, and I, I'm gonna put this in context and I'm going to try to avoid what I admonish myself and. Our fellow board members to um. Save the comments for our deliberations, but I have to put a little context to this. So first of all, I appreciate you coming forth with your. Uh, bike electrification increase and, cause that, that, that's very helpful. Um, so I spent some time with the, and with the um. Title ten, the electrical code, which points to the NEC and the NEC in terms of specification for outlets and outlet spacing. And then, uh, so outlet spacing is two, six, twelve. Any wall more than two feet gets an outlet.
Yeah.
No, uh, no, there should be uh, a six-foot cord should reach any outlet along a wall. And no more than twelve feet apart in a living room, bedroom, et cetera, outlet to outlet.
Yep.
Hence the six feet. In the kitchen, it's down to four feet or twenty-four inches between, because of short cords for safety for electrical appliances. Okay, having said all that, and then I, then I counted on the first floor of my house, twelve hundred square feet, first floor. Three bed, three rooms, living room, kitchen. Seventy actual receptacles or thirty-five outlets, thirty-five dual outlets. That's a lot. And, you know, but it meets it, it was required to meet the code. So my question is, so. There'll be a similar number in these apart, in, in these apartments. My question is, in a bike storage room, what is the reluctance to just electrify? I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're shaving numbers here. Oh, we'll go from ten percent to twenty percent or whatever for electrification. Why, why in a bike storage room in this particular area do we, do you? Um, want to, uh, is it a big deal to just electrify it as suggested in the uh. In the Community Cycles original letter from June?
Yeah.
That was a lot, that was a lot to get to a question. I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that, but.
Congratulations on reading the NEC. Like, I don't know many people who have done that. I certainly haven't. Um, so, you know, I think it's just. There's a lot of things that have to be thought through. There's not a reluctance. It's just a matter of getting people to accept it and it's much like the sustainability code, you know, it ratchets up over time and that allows people to kind of get comfortable with each step as you go. Uh, one of the big things you have to keep in mind is we can't use extension cords or power strips, right? So every bike needs an outlet on the wall. And every bike needs a safe way to run the cord so that people aren't tripping over each other's cords. The other thing that's a concern, and you've heard me mention this a bunch of times, is that batteries keep exploding and we're not quite sure how to deal with it. So I think all of those things combined lead us to trying to figure out what we're doing and we really don't know. So doing it incrementally is a little bit easier. As you mentioned, it's not so hard to add outlets. It's not a big deal. Um, you know, and certainly the, the way the chargers work, you can, like, very soon. Okay, so when you, trying to figure out how geeky to get with this answer, but I will try to keep it a little bit surface. If you have a bank of outlets, the engineer has to design it for the biggest things that could be plugged into that, all running at the same time. It's actually required under the NEC to do that, but that's not how bike chargers work. Car chargers and bike chargers to different levels are able to all plug in and then if there's not as much, you know, uh, current as they want, they can trickle charge. So if you have something that could support one bike on a full charge, it could support eight bikes on an eighth charge. That technology exists, but it's not approved yet. So that's kind of one of the things is that we're sort of waiting for all of this to catch up with itself because frankly, electrification and battery power are all pretty new. Um, building backup batteries. We wanna be able to use car batteries to charge the building and then the building to charge the cars, depending on the time of day. Can't do it yet. The bike trickle charging isn't really available yet. So. I don't think it's reluctance. I think what we generally try to say is, hey, I know how to do this. I can do twenty-five percent. I know what that looks like. I know I can get through the Excel design program with it and I know what to tell the electrical engineer. And it's not gonna blow up the panels on the building. We haven't yet done one that's a hundred percent. And to be blunt, I don't know how nasty that's gonna get under the NEC with the load demands. So that's why.
Great, that was a good answer. Thank you. Um, and then on a more mundane and simpler level, the um, if you look. On the uh, plan view of the parking garage, the eastern spaces. They, they shows um, depending upon which drawing and which page. There's a treatment above it, like those spaces are either like, um, I'll, I'll point to, I'll point to a. On uh. PDF page one twelve, which is memo page ten. Uh, it shows the parking. And then those eastern parking spaces become almost like a comb. There, there's a bunch of lines. And there's, there's combs and then in a different one, it's a different kind of set of lines. What, what's going on there above those eastern parking? Is that above, below? What am I seeing?
Oh, okay, I know what you're saying and I do have a slide that'll show that. Bear with me a minute. I'm gonna show the eastern side of this. And essentially this comes from trying to, to reduce the parking enough to squeeze it all onto the one level. Um, and again, you know, we're down to a hundred and twenty-six spots, a hundred and forty-four units. I said that before. That's cars sticking out because they didn't quite fit under the building. And we didn't wanna just have cars sticking out because eventually that's gonna be a multi-use path.
Okay.
And we wanna make that pleasant, so we, we shielded it, um, both with a trellis and with.
Okay, so my car, actually, if I park nose in.
Yep.
My car sticks out.
Yep.
But I have a screen beyond my car, there are fence, whatever.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, normally it'd be back at building and people wouldn't care, but that's gonna be a multi-use path, so we care.
Gotcha. Okay, um, and let me just check and see if I have um. What is the surf, okay, just uh. Chuck Brock's comments in the Community Cycles letter does bring up the question of, okay.
Yeah.
I, I went to the grocery store. I don't have a car.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, I did it in the rain. The hallway surface, um, you know, again, like the whole kind of dirty bike thing. How are you addressing that hallway surface? Are those hard surface floors? Are those soft? Are those?
Um, you know, we haven't really gotten there yet. What we generally tend to use is a carpet that's water-resistant because the same issue happens if people get, you know, dogs, mud, wet shoes. Um, and so there's certain carpets that you can use that have a water-resistant backing. Most carpet, like normal carpet, if it gets wet, the backing slowly kind of falls apart. So there's, there's carpet that you can use. It's a little more expensive that has water-resistant backing, so that's what we would tend to use. And then it would be cleaned. There's a cleaning staff, so as long as you don't grind the dirt in, it comes off pretty well. Um, but again, it's, it's more like, it's the zeitgeist of the project. This, you can see from this front elevation, this is designed to be an urban project. Like, that's the whole image of it and like from the beginning we had in our, in our heads, uh, this was the applicant's vision. Like, what would a classy downtown building look like? What would feel really upscale and really nice? And so that's what this is supposed to be. As part of that urban feeling, like it's really important that you're able to bring your bike in. Because that's like the urban experience and this is a super bikable place. So um, you know, there's just little things inside the building that we're gonna have to pay attention to, like on certain corners. The drywall might be backed by plywood, so if somebody bounces a bike handle into it, you don't get a hole in the drywall. Um, doors open different ways, just things like that, but that's part of the zeitgeist of the project. Um, so all of those things are sort of considered in the, in the interiors. We're just not there yet.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, uh, Kurt?
Sorry, one other question about the bike parking.
Yeah.
You requested to change the long-term, short-term ratio from seventy-five, twenty-five to eighty-five, fifteen. Can you talk about why?
Yeah, we just felt because the number of parking spaces required for a hundred and forty-four units just created a absolute sea of short-term parking out in front of the building. And it started to erode what the area plans expected in terms of the building-to-street sort of experience. And you can see that, um, I don't, I won't try to, if you wanna see it, I'll shift the pictures, but we already have, you know, a ton of bike parking on the north side against Folsom. The short-term bike carpet parking is supposed to be within fifty feet of the front door. So it just became incredibly burdensome to meet all the other criteria and put that much short-term bike parking there. So we thought a couple of things. First, we thought there was plenty of short-term just for the use of the building with the fifteen percent. The second is that lots of times when people come to visit friends, they just bring the bike up to the unit and the building's gonna be designed to that, so that sort of worked. And lastly, anybody living in the building could meet their friend to put the short-term bike into their long-term spot, because every unit's gonna have two lo, long-term spaces. So it just felt like without, you know, a big commercial driver of people coming shopping or something. It was all manageable because people would generally be visiting friends. So that was the, that was the reasoning. It was really just to reduce that huge sea of use out in front of the project to a reasonable number.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Claudia, do you have additional?
I haven't asked any yet, Mark.
Oh, no, I'm so sorry.
But I only have two.
Okay.
If you'll, if you'll allow it, yeah. So, thank you. Um, so we're doing a use review for these ground floor, quote-unquote, residential uses along Folsom. Um, and I was curious, what is the square footage of the lobby and associated areas that you've got going on there on the ground floor?
Give me just a second.
Okay.
Crack researcher is on it. Can we go to your next question and?
I mean, sure, we'll go to the next one. Different topic. Um. How do your buildings and the courtyards in particular interact with the existing buildings to the south of this site? So we haven't really seen anything dealing with like the rear facades or elevations of, of the buildings directly to the south. Can you tell us anything about those?
Um, is the, I guess I don't fully understand the question, but you're just trying to see if we have a good, are we being a good architectural neighbor to the buildings to the south? Is that the idea?
Um, it's, it's more like, how are your spaces designed to interact with them, right? So we've, we've heard from, um, Golden West, your neighbors to the north.
Yeah.
You know, that they have concerns about your facade.
Yep.
Um, what are you looking at in terms of views, light, et cetera, um, to the south of your site?
Well, we were able to separate the building from the property line pretty well on both sides. At one point, we had both the bike path and the drive entry together. And once it was on the north and another time was on the south. And that was really to create that separation. But we felt, just to your point, that both sides mattered. And so we were able to, and also, you know, having those things next to each other just didn't feel great from a conflict standpoint with, you know, cars and bikes. So by separating them, we were able to pull the, the building pretty far away from the property line. On the south side, I think it's 24 feet from the property line, maybe a little bit bigger. And that's mostly because that's what the fire trucks need for the fire access. But that creates sort of a light well there. And then we have the, the courtyards that face south, which is one of the site review suggestions, that courtyards face south. So that's a pretty decent sized space. We do know that eventually somebody will build a five-story building there and it will have the same sort of views that it does now. And, and I think that's fine. We would hope that the neighbor would, you know, much like we're doing on the north side, would think about what we're doing on the south side of this building and design something that would be, you, you know, um, that would kind of work with it. And that doesn't mean stepping the building way back. It just means creating the sort of interest along that building that would be a good end to that courtyard. But again, it's, it's going to be, um, 10 feet off their property line, so it's going to be 35 feet away from the closest part of our building. And that felt pretty good.
Okay, yeah, I was, I was curious, like if there's existing shading to those courtyards or if they actually do get up above.
They, they will be above the neighboring building to start.
For now, yeah.
It's a one-story building, but again, you know, we know that that should redevelop, it should change.
Okay. Um, yeah, and then back to that question about the lobby space.
3,880.173 or something.
And if you were not to get a use review approval to have that be residential space, where would you provide lobby functions or how would you provide lobby functions?
Um, I don't think we need a use review just to have the fundamental requirements for the building entry. So we can do a lobby entry, we can do like, uh, mail drop-off. That sort of stuff is allowed without a use review. What we need a use review for is essentially the, the co-working area being residential use. And I think, um, as, as we sort of outlined in our written statement and as Allison wrote up in her use review analysis, this is a great spot for people not to drive to work. Um, and if they want to work from home, what we're seeing more and more is, you know, people are just not going into the office every day. I mean, I think city staff is in the office like halftime or something, just as an example, that's hundreds of people. So the idea that somebody can still leave their apartment to go to work and go down to their first floor is why we have that co-working there. Um, and we felt like really that provides the function of commercial and that interaction to the street, um, without making people get into cars. So there's a transportation benefit for doing that. Um, that was identified in the use review, so no.
Thank you.
Okay, any final questions for the applicant? Okay, great, we're going to close this portion and we're going to open the public hearing. And, um, uh, I'll just request of, uh, any of the speakers, if you have to just, if you have any financial relationship to the applicant, uh, that you state that, uh, during your comments.
Don't we ask whether the public has a financial?
Interest.
Interest, including as a neighbor?
So this was not adopted.
It was not, okay.
It was not adopted specifically in, let me just, um.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't mean to slow things down.
Yeah, no, I, it, um, let me just open the rules real quick and we'll just take a second, if that's okay with everybody. I have the rules handy. But at our last public hearing, you know, uh, we had a little bit of a.
While you're doing that, I want to observe that Laura Kaplan just pulled a mug of coffee out of the sky. It was pretty cool.
Okay. There is, uh, in my, uh, quick re-reading, in our rules of procedure, there is nothing, um, there. And, um, so I think as a matter of good practice, it, but just like our, the enforcement of keeping on topic during, um, public hearing items for this sort of thing is not particularly enforced and, and I'm not going to try to do it. Um, anyway, it was, it's a request that, uh, if you have a relationship and if you're a neighbor, uh, you can, you can tell us that, that would be appreciated, so.
If I may, just to clarify.
Yes.
It, it sounds like you were referring to the rules of procedure, but I believe what you all are speaking to would be in the virtual and hybrid meeting guidelines that does specifically state that, uh, prior to offering testimony, the speaker will disclose any financial or business relationship with the applicant, the project, or neighbors, including pay compensation. Also would be helpful if the speaker disclosed any membership or affiliation.
Can you point me to the, uh, section, please?
Yeah, so this is not the planning board rules of procedure, this is the City of Boulder virtual and hybrid meeting guidelines.
Thank you. Okay, so can you repeat that so that, and, and repeat it, we'll do it for, for all of the, uh, participants here tonight who may be speaking, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so I am reading from City of Boulder Planning Board Virtual and Hybrid Meeting Guidelines. This document was included in tonight's packet. Uh, it appears to be page three. And, and bullet point number two, public hearing, um, there is at, number two, bullet point two, the board requests that prior to offering testimony, the speaker disclose any financial or business relationship with the applicant, the project, or neighbors. This includes any paid compensation. It would also be helpful if the speaker disclosed any membership or affiliation that would affect their testimony.
Great, thank you, Deshaun, I really appreciate that. And it is, it is an interesting, uh, it is interesting that that is actually not part of our rules of procedure, but it is in page three of our packet in, in the hybrid meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, having, having clarified all of that, um, uh, we will go to our public hearing, which Thomas, we traditionally, uh, go to in-room speakers first?
Yes, that's correct, and we do have one individual signed up to speak in person and that's Jonathan Singer. Jonathan, if you would like to approach the podium and give your comment. And meanwhile, for everyone online, this is the public hearing opportunity for item 5B. If you would like to speak to this item, um, please go ahead and raise your hand now so we can get an idea of how many speakers there will be on this item. Thank you.
Hey, Thomas, um, I just want to look at the, uh, one, two, three, four, five. If you are online and you are planning on speaking, would you please raise your hand now, just so we can get a count? Um, I don't think we're going to have to shorten anything, but. Yeah, we should be fine, okay. Thank you very much, Thomas, and Jonathan, carry on.
You, you just turned off the mic, if you could, there you go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission as well. Uh, I am Jonathan Singer and this is the maiden voyage of my bifocals. Um, I, uh, I want to mention that the applicant is our members of the Boulder Chamber and I am the Senior Director of Policy Program for the Boulder Chamber. Um, in light of, uh, today's holiday, I did want to mention in the spirit of Sukkot, um, with its temporary dwelling, I hope it reminds us of our shared vulnerability and inspire a commitment to peace as we hold in our hearts all those who have been hurt by the October 7th attack and its devastating aftermath. In that vein, I also want to talk about the, um, abode that is being built here today. As you can see, this, projects like this truly represent a gold standard. They represent an opportunity to take, uh, advantage and use of the fact that, um, amenities such as, uh, grocery store and other retail environments are close by. Um, but more specifically, I want to, um, mention the, uh, fact that there's a proposed multi-use path along the north side of the property. And the applicant's building the path now and we commend that. But until that connection to 26th Street can be constructed through the neighboring parcel, uh, the path will dead-end at the property line. Why is this important right now? Well, from a vision zero standpoint, Boulder's commitment to eliminating serious injuries and fatalities on our transportation network are paramount. And we believe opening a public path that ends abruptly could inadvertently introduce new safety risks. Cyclists and pedestrians expect continuous facilities in the sudden dead-end forces users to stop abruptly and make unsafe U-turns, increasing the potential for conflict with vehicles, residents, or other travelers. So, uh, the Boulder Chamber, um, supports this proposal to temporarily limit access to building residents only until the 26th Street connection is complete. And this upholds that vision zero principle, safety by design. It prevents foreseeable conflicts before they occur. At the same time, it allows the developer the infrastructure now, ensuring it's ready to seamlessly open once the full network connection is in place. This is a sequencing issue, not a policy retreat. We can protect public safety today while preserving Boulder's long-term multimodal goals. This will ensure that the infrastructure is in place and ready for eventual public use, aligning with the city's long-range network plans. It avoids near-term safety and wayfinding problems associated with public deadends. And it allows housing and site improvements, which are the heart of this project, uh, to proceed without delay. So in closing, we support, uh, the, uh, housing and its core elements, but we also support the applicant's temporary access restriction. And we hope that you consider this in your deliberations, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us and next we will move to our online participants. First up, we have Lynn Segal. Lynn, I'm unmuting you now and you have three minutes to speak, please go ahead.
I'm opposing this project, not because Bill didn't do a great job designing it, but because this is just too much. We've got the rally, we've got depot, we've got diagonal, we've got the Glenwood one. That it's, we got Papelios. This community cannot handle this level of congestion. And all this housing drives jobs. And then jobs, housing balance doesn't get balanced, it never gets balanced. Boulder Valley Comp Plan is supposed to balance jobs and housing. Nobody is balancing jobs and housing. The more housing you put in, the more jobs you're going to have. High-end jobs and many low-end jobs that can't afford to live here, that need more housing, right? So this is more apartment buildings. People don't like to live in apartment buildings, even if they have their, you know, um, work, study place, you know, co-working. Still, they don't want to be trapped in their place or they're going to use carbon footprint, if not to go to Europe, they're going up to the mountains or they're going just to Sunitas and they're moving around. They're going somewhere, going, going, going. Because they live in an apartment building. They live in an apartment building at all those places that I mentioned and many more. And then with the student population crushed into apartments and tinier and tinier spaces. We need our spaces, our open space, and that's why many people come here. But ironically, it brings them just exactly what they don't want, which is more confinement to a small space. So they leave and they go out. And basically the bicycles just add to it, they still have their cars. It's nice that it went down to 126 parking spaces, but 144 units is not okay. It's not, I mean, let's go, Glenwood is 150, diagonal, who knows what that is? Depot, Bill knows all these numbers. Rally, sports place, like this is just too much. And then throw in Sundance and throw in CU South and throw in where do we put the homeless camping now? You know, they don't want it in North Boulder. It wasn't supposed, you know, all of this, all this expense, APAC owns everything. You know, this is all about Israel and Palestine. That's what this whole subject is. It couldn't me, be more of a local issue. And you know, it's not October 7th, it's November 2nd, 1917, Balboa.
Thank you, Lynn, your time is up, thanks for joining us. We're going to move to our next speaker. We have Beach H, we will need your full name, so please begin with your full name.
Hi, uh, my name is, thank you members, my name is Beach Helterbrand. Uh, I live at 1850 Folsom, the neighborhood to the north, where I'm on the HOA board. Additionally, I own a small business with an office on this block, this is my neighborhood. I have a financial interest as a neighbor, as I own my unit and 35 years old and intend to live here until they put me in the ground. I am speaking to you today on behalf of the residents of Horizon West. To start, a board member asked about the multi-use path being used as open space for the height modification. And I'd like to follow up with a question of how a multi-use path from the street to a fence can be considered public access for the height exception? Even the applicant admitted it goes nowhere, so why does it count? Additionally, ML asked how many of our units' views would be impacted? The answer is at least 20 units or 1/6 of our building. I would love to address the falsities espoused by the developer as regards this block, but they are too numerous to cover my allotted time. I guess with all the exceptions they are asking for, they have to make my home sound like a blighted area. The more I have talked to my neighbors and thought about this building at 1840, 1844 Folsom, the angrier and sadder I have gotten. This city has heightened solar restrictions for a reason. It's not a big city. Property owners in this city do not expect that a five-story building will be built 30-odd feet from their window, removing their view of the flatirons and forcing them to live in constant shadow. But this development intends to subject at least 30 of my neighbors to this fate, to say nothing of ending our building's goal of utilizing our southern-covered parking for solar energy. We are not entitled to the shadow protection that most residential buildings in this city have because for some crazy reason we are zoned as BR1. I will never understand why our plat is zoned as a business development. We are a 50-year-old residential tower that has always been residential. But thanks to this zoning quirk, we are not entitled to the same solar rights, which makes it incumbent upon this board to protect our rights and quality of life. I am crushed and saddened for my neighbors. Some of those losing their view are in their 80s and have lived here for 30-plus years. Some rarely leave their units. They invested their life savings in a piece of property and now they will lose their view and the unit they planned to leave to their children or used to cover their end-of-life costs will be worth pennies on the dollar. Even sadder, once this building is complete, those who are unable to leave their units will spend their final years living in constant shadow and never seeing the sun. What for? Affordable housing? Units in our building rent for less per square foot than any of these new cookie cutter five-story sardine cans these developers call apartments. The only reason for this height exemption is so that a developer can add floors and make more money. This development will put a rounding error of a dent in the housing supply shortage in this town while crippling my neighbors financially and forcing them to literally live in the shadows. This development will destroy my neighbor's nest egg and wreck their quality of life. So unless you're in evil Robin Hood and want to steal from the working class and elderly to stuff the pockets of wealthy developers, you must vote against this project due to the height modification and protect our residents' right to see the sun.
Thank you, that concludes your time and we're going to move to the next speaker, Douglas Bent. Douglas, please go ahead. Douglas, I am unmuting you. Douglas, I'm unmuting you, I'm not sure if you are, if your microphone is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sonia Christian Bent. I am Doug Bent's wife. We own a condo at 1850 Folsom, which is the adjacent building. First, I have to say, after looking and listening to all the beautiful architectural drawings, wow, this residential building looks amazing. It will be very nice to have it next to Horizon West versus the commercial space. Just walking up the block right now, we just see commercial. When this building is built, we're going to actually have neighbors, not just a commercial space where people leave and you don't see them until the next day. Second thing I would like to speak about is, I would like to speak in support of the proposed parking allocation for 1844, 40 Folsom. While some residents have expressed concern that 126 parking spaces are allocated for 144 units may not be sufficient, I believe this ratio is actually appropriate and forward-looking for the younger demographic that will most likely live there. And to conclude, this plan aligns with how younger residents are living today and how cities like ours are evolving. I encourage the Commission to recognize that the proposed parking and bike facilities are not only adequate, but well-suited for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Our next speaker is Mark Thompson. Mark, you can go ahead and begin.
Yeah, hi, I'm Mark Thompson. I have a residence there at 1850 Folsom. I'm also the president of the HOA there at Horizon West. I had a prepared statement as president, but after listening to the presentation, I think I'm going to kind of go a little sideways on it. I have an answer to the question about why we're not, I think there was a question posed about the number of electric bike charging stations, why is the number higher? I think that's what I heard earlier. The reason why it's not higher is because there's no demand for it at this point. If everybody had an electric bike, then there would be a demand for it, but everybody who owns a bike obviously does not own an electric bike. And I feel like that concept is true to this entire design of this building. The parking spaces alone raise a lot of questions and concerns for, for me as a neighbor to this building. You know, I think the ratio that needs to be looked at is the number of bedrooms to parking spaces in apartment building, not the total number of units. Because if the clientele is going to be students, which is, feels like it would be, given the nature of the building, then I think it's logical to assume that there's going to be a lot more cars than there are parking spaces available. So what's going to happen, all that parking? And what's going to happen to us being right next to us, right next to this development that, you know, this parking would be affected by? The only other thing I'd say is, on the variances, it just feels like this formula for variances, and in this particular case, it just feels like there's a potential for a lot of problems going forward. The parking plans alone, to me, pose a significant financial burden on Horizon West in the future as far as, you know, needing to get gates to secure us and to keep out people who shouldn't be parking there. And it just doesn't feel like it's a good formula for success in the future. So I'll just leave it there. Thanks.
Thanks for your time, Mark. Our next speaker is Jaclyn Chavez. Jaclyn, you can go ahead and speak, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Planning Board. My name is Jackie Weinheimer, formerly Chavez, and I live on Folsom Street next to the proposed development. I really like living in this area because I'm so close to many different places in Boulder. We can walk to downtown Pearl Street for food and drinks, a quick walk to the grocery store, and Greenleaf Park where I take my dog. I even walk to the dentist from where I live. And I think future residents next door would probably also love living here and being able to walk to so many different places in Boulder. Right now, the proposed site is severely underused. The office buildings have been half-empty since the pandemic, and the only people living there are those in the occasional encampments that pop up in the parking lot. The plan for more apartments would be great for Boulder. Housing here is very unaffordable, especially for young people like me and my friends who have been priced out of Boulder, which is very sad. So the 144 new units would be very helpful. I support the site plan before you tonight because it would support Boulder's goals for housing and be much better than what is there today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we have one more raised hand, Alex Weinheimer. You can go ahead and speak. Alex, we have you unmuted. We can hear you now.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Alex Weinheimer, and I'm speaking on my own behalf. When trying to determine where in Boulder I wanted to live, there is one primary factor for me, walkability. I want it to be near many day-to-day destinations. That's how I wound up living on the 1800 block of Folsom Street. In the years that I've been here, I've lived both car-free and shared a vehicle with my wife, or a short walk to a wide choice of grocery stores, restaurants, and parks. We can take the hop downtown to CU and 29th Street. It's a great spot to call home. Out our windows, we can see the 1840 Folsom site, a couple of modest office buildings fronting Folsom with an expansive parking lot in the back. Very, very rarely have even half the parking spaces been in use at the same time. And of course, the site is dead on nights and weekends. Our city has so much excessive office space and a shortage of housing, so the site plan before you tonight presents a fantastic opportunity. It would take a large, underutilized piece of land in central Boulder and add some much-needed housing in a great neighborhood. I encourage the Planning Board to support the proposed site and use. The proposed scale, as permitted by the city charter, would enable the construction of much-needed housing in line with the vision of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, including our sub-area plan. The proposed vehicle parking strategies are well justified, given the favorable location of the development and the transportation demand management plan strategies. The extensive bicycle parking is also a great inclusion, given how many of the residents will likely be students and young professionals. While Folsom Street is not a low-stress bikeway today, it will be in the coming years. Two months ago tonight, City Council advanced the design concept for protected bike lanes and other multimodal safety improvements along our street as a part of the core arterial network. Please support the concept before you tonight. It's well-designed, much-needed, and would be a wonderful addition to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And if anybody else would like to speak to the public hearing for item 5B, this is your opportunity before we close this portion of the meeting. And seeing no further raised hands, I'm going to pass it back to you, Chair.
Great, thank you. And thanks to all who took the time to speak tonight. We heard you all. And now is an opportunity for the applicant to, any comment on the public comments?
Just really briefly, because we measured, excuse me, because we've measured it and it's come up. So the distance between the southern wall of the tower and the proposed north side of this project is between 57 and 80 feet, depending on, because our northern side modulates, it's, there's a range, but it's 57 to 80 feet between the buildings.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to, that closes the public hearing, and now we're going to move to board deliberation. And I believe Allison has a nice key issue slide. Okay, so as we have done as of late, I propose a round of comment about where board members get to speak their piece about whether this fulfills these key issues and criteria. And I find it most efficient if we answer all three as we, as we go around. And then we can move on into motion making. Kurt.
I have a question for staff. Can I ask that first?
Sure, yeah, please.
So the applicant had requested a few changes to the conditions, and one of them I want clarification on, is I understand it, they're asking with regards to the north-side multi-use path, a reservation instead of a public access easement. Can you explain to me what those words mean?
So our typical practice is to get a dedication, which is, I think, what we've asked for in the conditions of approval, if I'm not mistaken. Yep. So that's, you know, we basically get the property in fee, like we would any other multi-use path. I think in this case, the applicant is asking for a reservation, which basically is kind of the least amount of property rights you can have. It really just preserves the area from being ever further developed. And I think what they're requesting is a reservation in an effort to allow a gate to be placed there at the sidewalk until the rest of the connection is built, punched through to 26th, at which time then an access easement would be dedicated to the city and the gate would be removed. So I think right now, the idea is to temporarily restrict the public from using that until at whatever point the property to the east redevelops, new connections are established. It's problematic for us for a number of reasons. It's really hard for us to track that sort of thing over time. That's why we ask for the, you know, usually the dedication when there's a connection that's specified on the plan. But I think that's the ask tonight.
Okay, thank you, that was very helpful.
Laura, I see you, and I've got Mason. Okay, yeah, please, go ahead, Mason, and then we'll go to Laura.
Yeah, so on that, I see what they're getting at, and it makes a lot of sense to me, but it sounds like the, the method doesn't feel feasible to the city based on what you just said. What would be an appropriate route to achieve the same ends?
It's just typically not standard that we have the reservation. It's always a dedication with the public access easement. And as Charles said, we just can't track requiring that future public access easement.
You know, especially if that property doesn't redevelop for another, you know, 20 years or.
I guess maybe I didn't ask my question very clearly. Is there another way to achieve the same and not using a reservation?
To allow a gate there?
Allow a gate there.
No, not enough, not if, not if there's a public access easement with a dedication there.
Okay.
So Laura, if it's okay, I'm going to colloquy on the same. So the issue is, as one of the speakers mentioned, if it's open and you are traversing west to east, and you then encounter a dead end, a fence, the applicant has requested reservation, which will allow them to gate it. What other sort of treatment would we expect? Or would it be the city's responsibility to treat the multi-use path and its dead end until such time that it extends to 26th?
When you say treat it, meaning signage, saying dead end?
Signage, you know, yeah.
We could absolutely work with the applicant to, you know, to sign the path, you know, so that it was clear that there's no through pedestrian traffic there at this point.
Okay. And then how would we go about, so the applicant has verbally given us some proposed changes in regard to bike charging, et cetera, to the conditions. Do we have a, well, when we get to this point, do we have a written copy of their proposed changes? And then are we, anyway, how would we, how would you suggest we deal with the difference between their proposed changes and what you?
Thomas has the language.
Okay, when we get to that. Okay, um, okay, Laura? Okay, Laura, go ahead.
This is my, need to wait until we see the language on the screen, but are there any other of the applicant's proposed changes to the conditions of approval that staff is uncomfortable with or would want to modify?
I think there is a request to defer the financial guarantee for the ECO pass until certificate of occupancy. That's problematic in the sense that administratively, we typically get that financial guarantee at the time of building permit issuance, because that's how our system is set up. It creates another administrative burden for us to try and track that at certificate of occupancy. It's not the end of the world, but it's something else to miss. What's the other one? And then the last one is tied to public improvements. So that's widening for bike lanes, all of the public improvements that would be required. That financial guarantee also be similarly deferred from certificate of, I'm sorry, from building permit to certificate of occupancy, and it's, it's the same issue for us. It's just administratively, we're set up to do it at building permit.
Okay. You know, I'll hold my comments on this until we get there, but just a quick question, would it be an option for us, if we don't particularly have strong opinions about these matters, to simply defer them to staff to work out with the applicant, as you might have done if you had had more time?
And I'm sorry, the last one we just talked about, it's not the financial guarantee for the public improvements, it's the actual construct and complete.
Is the, I'm sorry, is the actual construction?
Correct, yeah.
So it's about the timing of when those things would be constructed? Yeah. So I guess I'm wondering, are these things that you need a determination from Planning Board about tonight, or are these things that could get hammered out with the applicant at a later time if the board is comfortable deferring to staff on these conditions, or some of these conditions?
They are conferring at the moment.
I appreciate a good conference.
I would appreciate it as well. So while you guys work through the conditions and, and the reconciliation of the conditions, I'm going to suggest that the board begin their commentary in regard to the key issues. And when we get to motion making and voting, then I think we'll, staff will have had sufficient time to present us with a reconciled set of conditions that we can actually address tonight.
Mark, I have a question for staff also.
Sure. So staff is, they're working through these conditions, so.
Anyway, I have a question that isn't deliberation.
Okay.
And anyway. Should I wait?
Yeah, let's wait just a second.
Or, okay. What's the question?
Well, we've had, we've had a bunch.
I can ask.
Go ahead, ML, yeah.
So it, I think it came in writing from some comments, and it also came tonight from one of the people in public comment. So my question is, can there be a condition on the project to take responsibility for parking consequences to Horizon West? It sounds like Horizon West might be incurring costs to try to manage parking, people trying to park from this applicant's project over on their property. And I'm curious as to whether there's any.
And I'm curious as to whether there's any recourse from that to require the applicant's project to take responsibility for that sort of thing.
Yeah, that would likely just be an enforcement issue. So if, if the neighbors to the north were experiencing parking in their spaces that are not for residents, then they could reach out to our enforcement team. As far as conditions, that would be like an off-site condition and not something that we can typically condition.
So they were concerned that they would have to put up a, a, a gate or monitoring gate, that they would incur a cost to deter parking.
Yeah, I think that would be up to the property owners and HOA if they want to put in that gate. But if, if there is spill over parking from the subject development, then they, they could reach out to our enforcement team and they would come out and make sure that, that parking is not happening. But we can't really control whether or not that gate is put in.
No, I, what I was saying is the cost of the gate. If the cost is because of something that this applicant's site creates.
Yeah, we can't, we can't require any um conditions that um, you know, require improvements off-site.
Or that would take responsibility for off-site consequences?
No.
That's my question. Thank you.
Mason, did you have another question? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so following back on the uh, the bike path conversation, what I heard you say was that it's hard to track um this, the structure. But I'm, I'm having a little trouble fully understanding how that's hard to track. Cause it seems to me if it's on the transportation plan, it's my understanding that path, the, if another site were to be developed to connect to that path, then wouldn't that, I don't know, jog the memory that this was the situation? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
It does, but I think that also then just revisits the, the off-site connect. You know, we couldn't condition, let's say the property to the east is redeveloped.
Not, not conditioning. Just like we didn't do the, the uh, the public right or if I'm, I'm.
The dedication.
The dedication.
Yeah, I mean, I think staff may recall the, the, the previous project, but it's still just not a way that we have it. We don't have an administrative way to track that. It would just be hopefully whoever's reviewing that case knows that the subject site.
But if you were to check, like, would you be able to find that information?
Um, I mean, probably, but it's just not part of our review process to make sure adjacent parcels have constructed or dedicated their easements, especially if it's, you know, 20 years from now, just hypothetical. We wouldn't really have any way of tracking that.
So like you wouldn't see like, oh, this, this was built this way. Here's this concrete line. What is that? Oh, it's reserved. You wouldn't be able to look that up.
Yeah, it's just not standard to look at the easements on the adjacent parcels. Um, it, it may, it may be caught, but it may not be. And we just don't have a way to form, formalize that review and requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, again, so here, here's, here's the plan. We're going to comment on the three key issues. And then we hope that we would have um a reconciled set of conditions to review when we get to um making the motion.
And staff would be okay with the concept of amending the requirement for public improvements from building permit to certificate of occupancy.
You are?
We'd be okay with that, yeah.
Okay.
So we'll have all the, Thomas will have the text to share, yeah.
Okay, excellent, thanks. So um, who is ready to go with their address? The addressing of the three key issues? Mason? Great, efficient.
Yep, so I'll roll through these. Uh, point number one is proposed project consistent. I find that the proposed project is consistent with the site review criteria under nine two fourteen H B R C nineteen eighty-one. The project aligns with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and the Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan, advancing goals of compact, walkable, and transit-oriented development. The proposed high-density residential use supports housing diversity and efficient land use while maintaining compatibility with surrounding commercial and residential areas. The site design provides strong pedestrian and bicycle connectivity through multi-use path connections, detached sidewalks, and landscape buffers. The transportation demand management plan demonstrates a clear commitment to reducing single occupant vehicle trips. The building design meets our standards for quality and urban character, using durable materials, articulated facades, and defined entries to create a human-scaled active land, uh, streetscape. Parking is enclosed within structures, minimizing visual and environmental impact. Open space is well-distributed, accessible, and programmed to meet residents' needs. Regarding height and land use intensity, the proposal qualifies for a height bonus under nineteen four, nine two fourteen H six, allowing additional stories from FAR in the B R one district. The project will be required to meet the inclusionary housing increase of eleven percent for bonus units with compliance verified at the building permit stage. Um, and I'll skip over that last bit to keep moving. Number two, is the proposed project consistent with use review criteria? I find the ground floor residential amenity uh programming, lobby co-working residential offices meets the use review criteria. It provides direct onsite services for residents, reduces off-site trips, and offers a compatible transition between nearby lower-intensity residential to the west and higher-intensity commercial to the east. The scale and operating characteristics are compatible with the area. Infrastructure impacts are addressed with onsite utility drainage and street scrape improvements, and the use is consistent with the character established in the Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan and B V R C design guidelines. Point number three is proposal consistent with the vision for the area shown in B V R C guidelines and Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan. Um, I believe the proposal is consistent with the vision for the area described in the Boulder Valley Regional Center Design Guidelines and the Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan. Both documents call for high-quality pedestrian-oriented redevelopment that strengthens the B V R C as a cohesive, memorable place. The proposal, the proposed residential use adds vitality and supports the mixed-use goals of the sub-area plan, while the building's placement, height transitions, and enclosed parking aligns with the B V R C's intent for a compact, well-integrated urban form. Along Folsom Street, the project reinforces the transitional role of the corridor between higher-intensity commercial use to the east and lower-scale residential to the west, consistent with the Folsom Transitional objectives.
Great, thank you. That was thorough and complete, Mason. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, who wants to follow that one? Kurt?
I guess I'll follow that because I can throw away all my comments. Pretty much just ditto it. Uh, so key issue one is the proposed project consistent with the site review criteria. I find that it is with one exception, and that is the curb cut, the, the lack of a curb cut for the multi-use path at Folsom. So I will have a condition related to that um due to um the site review criteria nine two fourteen H two A. For number two, is the proposed project consistent with the use review criteria? Yeah, I agree again with Mason. Um, the, the ground floor residential uses are, are consistent. And is it consistent with the area plans? Yes, I agree that it is. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, great. Um, I'm just checking online to see if, okay, no hands up online yet? Oh, ML, ML, there you go.
I will go and be even briefer, whittling our comments down to uh clear and concise. So I'm going to comment on the three issues collectively. There's a, there's potentially a good pedestrian experience in spite of the height. It's unfortunate that the neighbors lose their view, which somewhat explicitly is required to be protected by the sub-area plan. I'm concerned by only eleven percent pervious and the heat sink that the majority of the site retains. I'm not going to condition this project, but I think it could have done better.
Thank you, ML. Um, Claudia, are you ready?
I'll give it a shot. Starting with question one. Uh, my answer is yes, this project is consistent with both the BVCP land use map and policies, supporting jobs, housing balance, compact development, infill, and walkability. I think it's further consistent with the relevant portions of the B V R C design guidelines and the Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan, particularly those portions emphasizing pedestrian movement, streetscape, and building orientation, structured and screened parking, and the anticipation of additional housing and height in this area. Although I will point out again that I think it is ridiculous that we are subjecting proposals to plans that have not been revised since the nineteen nineties. I think the proposal is, with possible minor exceptions, consistent with the site design criteria, including improvements required by the T M P, requirements for open space, and for a height bonus. In writing up these notes, I anticipated some concerns around bike parking and access and open space. It sounds like the bike issues are being addressed by others. Um, and I'm receptive to well-crafted conditions that formalize that. Um, I am less receptive to concerns about open space on the site. I think as a board, we have had some extensive discussion recently about open space requirements, and particularly whether that space is ground level and/or visible from adjoining public rights-of-way as addressed in the criteria for additional height in nine dash two dash fourteen H four B little one four seven. If I understand staff's guidance about this and the building facade lengths correctly, these are considerations and not standalone criteria. And I think that given that the open space on this site is of the quality demanded by our code. I also think what the elevated courtyards here facilitate is also critical to meeting other site review criteria, namely that they allow the applicant to place parking under the building, thus reducing surface parking and pavement and the many environmental and design problems that surface parking causes. The BVCP and other adopted plans talk so much about making a higher-quality development for all members of our community. And I think the problem solving expressed in the site and building design here makes a higher-quality livable place and sociable spaces for apartment dwellers, and these things matter. With regards to the use review, I think yes, it meets the criteria. The ground floor residential use provides a convenience to residents of the area. It reduces adverse impacts that could be created by vacant commercial space if we required that here. We've also had this discussion before in areas that are clearly saturated with retail and office uses, and we have provided relief. I think we should do here, do so here as well. And question three about the uh, the other design guidelines and sub-community plan, I did address in my answer to the first.
Great, thank you, Claudia. Laura, are you ready in here?
Uh, yes, yeah, and I've, I've been here the whole time. I know I said I might have to step out for a bit, but I did not have to.
Understand, I just, just.
Yep, I'm, I'm here and I can go. Um, and I am going to be a little less brief. Um, I'm going to be winging this a little bit because I want to, I want to commend the applicant for um answering questions really well and changing my mind on a few things. Um, so I'm going to start with the, from the bottom up. Um, is the proposal consistent with the vision for the area as shown in the B V R C design guidelines and the Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan? Um, I'm going to say yes, with one slight uh modification that I'm going to propose as a condition, um, having to do with a commercial space. And I think this also goes to uh number one as well um, in terms of the site review criteria, one of which is consistency with the land use map. I do think that, you know, if we're going to apply the code that we have, um, the site review criteria, the land use map, having this be a general business area, I disagree that a hundred percent residential projects are encouraged or a, a good thing in a general business um land use category. Um, you know, the, the, the description in the um BVCP clearly states that general business consists of a mix of business uses and compatible housing will be encouraged and may be required as a transition. The area should continue to be used without expanding the strip character. I read this as encouraging adding residential to commercial uses in general business, and I one hundred percent support that. I one hundred percent have, support having four floors of residential above some commercial space and some parking. I think that's a really great um use of the site. But I do think that that Folsom corridor deserves to still be general business, not a hundred percent residential. I think, you know, I'm sensitive to the concerns about vacant retail. We definitely don't want that. I think that we hit upon a pretty elegant solution in some other projects where a resident-serving uh amenity space can also be shared with the public. And if the applicant is open to that, I think that that is a good solution to include some neighborhood-serving commercial uses. So for example, people paying a, a membership fee or a daily use fee to use that co-working space or whatever that resident amenity space along Folsom turns out to be. I think that encourages the social mixing and it makes sure that um this is not a, a space that is removed from access to the public completely. Um, so I will be proposing that condition uh and see what the rest of folks think about that and whether that might be acceptable to the applicant. Um, and, and that relates also to the um Boulder Plaza Sub Area Plan, Folsom Transitional Area. I don't think that a one hundred percent residential building provides any kind of useful transition between small-scale residential and more intense commercial. It's, I think it's the use that needs to transition. So having even just a little bit of mixing along Folsom there, I think would bring it into compliance with that um Folsom Transitional Area in a way that makes me feel very comfortable um supporting that it is consistent with the, that plan. Moving up to the use review criteria, I, I think it clearly meets that. And then up to the site review criteria. Again, I, I, this relates to that general business zoning. I do want to say that I had some significant concerns, as you can tell from my questions, about the criteria for a height bonus that relate to that open space courtyard and that two hundred foot building length. And I want to say that I do object to framing those as mere suggestions that can be discarded without a lot of analysis. I think we have to do our due diligence, which is not to say that my board, fellow board members have not done a lot of analysis or that the applicant and staff did not do analysis, but I think it behooves us. And in, in fact, we are required to treat those um, those design factors as more than just suggestions. And I want to, I want to quote from Carl Geiler um, and some of the testimony that he gave to counsel when these site design criteria were revised to add that um ability to have a little bit more flexibility and not have to um rigidly apply these factors, right? So in the staff recommendation to adopt this language that said that these are factors that should be considered, uh, Carl's slides said, these site review criteria includes criteria that are significantly more descriptive, making the expected design quality baseline very clear so that projects will be on better footing coming in the door. And when a question was asked about this by Lauren, I think in relationship to having uh entryways every fifty feet, Carl's response was, um, we show factors as best practices. That may not be the right answer in every context. We added some language that recognizes there will be different contexts where that fifty feet, or I'm gonna, me personally, I'm going to say by extension, that factor is written, is not going to make sense. It does not have to be rigidly applied. So it seems clear to me that these are expected best practices that show the design quality that we're looking for, but they don't have to be rigidly applied if they don't make sense in context. So that's what I'm looking for, and that's why I asked the questions that I did about whether there's something about this site in particular that would make it impractical, unwise, um, just really undesirable to break that building down to less than a two hundred foot um building facade along a public right-of-way and to have that courtyard at ground level. And I think that Bill gave very persuasive answers um about why in this particular context, the longer building facade makes sense on this long, skinny right-of-way and that um in this context, in this area of town with such intensity, having that courtyard at ground level doesn't make sense on this site. I do think we're seeing a lot of projects that are making an argument that a ground-level courtyard doesn't make sense, especially for a residential building. Now, not all site review projects are residential, some of them are commercial, and so a court, a courtyard might look different and have different uses. I do think that if we are finding that. We're getting more exceptions than projects where it does make sense in context, we might want to revisit that criterion in the site review criteria. Because it doesn't make any sense for us to have a criterion that. We're making exceptions to basically with every project. Um, but I will say that I, I uh, came into this. Um, this hearing not knowing which way it was gonna go for me on these criteria. And I, I do think the applicant made a good contextual argument. So um, I will be supporting the project and I will be proposing that one condition about the commercial, yeah, potentially sharing that amenity space with um, the public and making it more commercial serving.
Hey, thank you Laura. Um. So, eh, my response to the three key questions, uh, I, I really appreciate. My fellow uh, board members uh, being so thorough. In uh, the way they've addressed these. And um. So. The first question, I, I certainly find. The project consistent with the site review criteria. And I, I want to note that. We have a criteria and that criteria tries to serve the city as a whole and, and. And I think sometimes we diminish or kind of forget. Trying to serve the residents of the project. And um. That sometimes the criteria, uh, we tend to focus on those things that are external. Uh, to the site and how it relates to the street, et cetera. And I think the app, this applicant has done a, a really good job. Taking a site and making it work. For the residents while still fulfilling the broader site review criteria and how it relates. Uh, to the public right of way, Folsom. The multi-use path, et cetera, and I think, um, so I, I, I appreciate that and um. Uh. And I certainly think it is consistent with the use review. Um. Criteria and the fact that. It, this is. Anyway, it's, it's consistent there and I have no uh, desire for uh, some additional. Transition um. Between the commercial uses immediately to the south and the uh. Very dense residential use immediately to the north. I, I think this is um. I think this, this whole transition argument is something that again, as I go around the city. I see some of our most lively, interesting, activated spaces are where. Uh, residential uses uh, but commercial uses and I, you can look at West Pearl, you can look at a number of different areas, but those, those areas. Um, we, we don't need this gentle fluffed transition. Some of these, eh, we, what we need are lively areas that people use and people live in. Um, and then finally, I, I wanna concur with Claudia that um. I, I don't give. And, and maybe I'll get in trouble here. I, I give less weight to a plan that is thirty-five years old. Uh, and you know. It, it just, uh, the world has, there's a lot that has changed in the world, so. Um, while I think it's consistent with the B V R C and the Boulder Plaza sub area plan. Um, it is, uh, I think the site review criteria and the use review criteria. Uh, should carry a much greater weight, so. And uh, so I will be supporting this, I hope that we can. Um, I, as someone who many times makes motions to condition projects. I'm going to try to minimize, I'm hoping that the um, agreement between the applicant and staff. For the uh, proposed conditions that we're going to be addressing here shortly. Um, I'm hoping that that works for most of us and we, I, I won't be uh, proposing, I don't think. Uh, any changes to those conditions. So. Okay, any other comment before we go on to looking at conditions and making motions? And again, this is a site review. And so um. The conditions unlike the annexation uh, thing we did earlier where we had a motion before the main motion, et cetera. This is a main motion and then. Possible amendments to that main motion. Okay, and so here we have. The main motion. And subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and I think we need to. Right. Review those and. Would, would the staff want to walk us through this?
Guys, while we're here, so the first one relates to the proposed bike parking, so twenty percent, an additional twenty percent of spaces to be wired for charging.
Okay.
Um, so Steph is supportive of that. Um, the second relates to the reservation rather than the dedication and public access easement so that the applicant. Uh, could um. Install a gate on the multi-use path until it's further. Developed and connects onto twenty-six. Staff wouldn't support that, but for the board's consideration this evening, we put it up there. Um. The next one, so condition five. Um.
Cool.
So this relates to the timing of the financial guarantee of the eco pass. Um, so the applicant again is um, requesting that it be provided at certificate of occupancy, our typical practice, as I indicated, is that building permit. And then if you wanna, okay, so number six relates to the timing of the uh, construction and completion of the public improvements. Staff would support changing prior to issuance of building permit to prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. So it's three and five, I think that. Staff would struggle to support.
Mason?
So on the first one. I'd like to propose a change to it, but I don't know what the appropriate method is.
Well, so. It, it, it's formal.
Yes.
You, you do it formally, and so um. Well, maybe let's just discuss it for a second and then before, and then we can talk about logistically how to do it. What is your?
I want those uh, twenty percent to be. Inclusive of the cargo bike spaces, not just any space. Does that make sense?
Okay, so. And if you rem-. You remember last week? The ten by three spaces. Are the cargo bike spaces, those are required to be electrified. Is that? What I remember? I'm asking staff or the applicant, either one who can clarify that.
I thought it was the other way around. If you're electrified, you're required to be ten by three.
No, it was the ten by three. Is the five percent that was the requirement, and those were electrified, and so it would be twenty percent. What I read this as. Twenty percent additional spaces beyond the five percent required by the ten by three cargo spaces. Would be electrified.
In the designs, those weren't listed as electrified.
Yeah, and I just want to add that the applicant is supportive of having all the cargo uh, bike spaces be electrified.
Okay.
Okay, clear that, thanks.
Okay.
Sorry, just to follow up on that, so you are. You are comfortable with this as stated, correct?
Yep. Okay. So. How, um. I know Laura has a condition she's going to propose. But. In dealing with these conditions, so we have, let's say. Can we say with a, with a show of hands, a knot of four? Um, if council gets to use that, then, then maybe we can too, that. We agree with the things that staff agrees with. Okay?
Mark.
And so, yes?
Perhaps we could just make a motion to say um. Board recommends amending. The proposed motion with the applicant's proposed amendments. As acceptable to staff or something like that, and then that would include. Staff's ability to reject some of these if, if they do, are not comfortable.
Um.
Or we could just individually amend them, tack them on, the ones that staff is okay with, we could tack them on to the main motion as amendments.
Or, I, I would suggest, let me ask, let's, let me ask the question a different way. Is the board generally supportive of staff's? Findings, their opposition to the two items that we would simply. Support staff's position on those two items. In that case. We could, we could just. Adopt staff's position, which. adopts the applicants on the three items and adopts their own position on the two items. As a consequence. We'll just. We would be able to adopt this set of conditions. Was I, was I, I was unclear on that, okay? Did you, did you follow that? Okay, go one at a time and. Okay. We, we, we need to begin with the main motion then. If we're gonna do this. Okay? So. Let's scroll back up. Oh, it's that, to the main motion, please. Okay. Let's uh.
Do you want it?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I move to approve site review application L U R twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 seven seven. And. Use review application L U R twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 seven eight. Adopting the staff memorandum as findings in fact, including. The attached analysis of review criteria and subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
I'd like to second, please.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. And. I, I, I want to go um, right to the conditions, okay? And so what I'm gonna propose is that we go. We make a um. Proposal for a condition. One at a time. And we uh, adopt. Uh, either the applicant or staff's. Uh, proposal on, on that, so. Okay, Kurt?
So I move that to add a condition that.
Uh, oh. Okay.
That an additional twenty percent of the bike parking space would be wired for charging, but not subject to the ten foot by three foot space requirement. And this would be offered above and beyond the required five percent.
I'll second that. Okay, Kurt, is your motion, would you like to speak to that, okay? I, I don't have anything else, let's um. Does any other board member want to speak to this motion? Okay. Uh, Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
M L?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. The next one.
I think we just could skip this one, couldn't we, Mark? Since we, we are not. Um, advocating for doing anything with this. We would just leave it to staff and the applicant to work out some signage, unless we want to propose a condition to add some signage.
I, I would actually, I feel differently on this. I don't know, I have more faith in the city staff. On remembering. That this is the intended purpose of this. I don't know if other people.
You're welcome to make the motion.
Yeah, I have a feeling it's gonna fail. Um. But I think it's a. I'm gonna make the motion, then I can speak to it, I suppose, if I get a second, so. Um. Uh, is it that, that bottom section there?
The blue.
Yeah. I would like to propose an amendment for a reservation agreement for the northern multi-use path that contains an option for the city to convert the path to a public access easement. Once the connection to twenty-sixth street is complete. Applicant requests the ability to temporarily gate the multi-use path and restrict access to residents only for safety and security reasons. Let's see if I get a second.
Second.
Okay.
So I found, when I think about this in process. I think it's a great idea to do, just in general. Um, there's no need for public access to this area without a connection. Uh, having public access can lead to. Safety issues as one can probably imagine, both from a, people accidentally accessing this area. Uh, and needing to turn around or what have you, or are the folks not associated with the use of the path for transportation or for access to the building? Being in this enclosed, semi-enclosed at least area. So I'm rather persuaded that it's a good idea to put a gate here until the path is actually at its full intended use. Upon the, you know, development of the buildings behind it, et cetera. So that I find very persuasive. I. I, I, I'm just not following the, what we're hearing from staff about not forgetting that this path. Is for this purpose upon the development of those other purposes. So the reason that they opposed it, I don't find as convincing or persuasive as the reason for this change, if that makes sense.
Thank you, uh, Claudia, you're the second, and then uh, I saw M L's hand up and then Laura's hand.
Okay, so I'm also very compelled by the safety arguments for restricting some access to this. Before it is a through path. Um, I think a lot of the safety on paths is provided by constant activity. Um, and this could potentially be a somewhat dead zone that would. Um, basically not be defensible space for people that are using it to access. The garage spaces of this development, and those folks will be on foot or on bike, which I think is um. Puts them in a more vulnerable position, so I am moved by the safety arguments here.
Okay, uh, M L, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, um, so I thought that the applicant said that they would be using. Uh, that access to. The primary bike access into the building, that that little art. Cove. And the access up into the building from there. That that was the way that, the primary way that the pedestrians and bicyclists get into the property. So I don't know how closing off that path is gonna work with that. Aren't they using that path to get over? To. Access their. Bike and pedestrian access? It, it seems like it's gonna be activated by the building users themselves. I could be wrong, but that's what I thought I heard the applicant saying that that. Was gonna be the primary access for the bike and pedestrian. Um. Into the building.
Hey, thanks, M L. I'm gonna go to Laura and then Kurt.
Yeah, I, I have similar concerns to M L, um, that this is meant to be a primary bike access and pedestrian access, and if you put a gate there, even if residents have a, a, a key card or something to get through it. Uh, it just puts up a barrier that means that this will be unlikely to get used. And then that would route all the bicyclists through the front door, probably in the lobby and the coworking space, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but it seems like that's not the circulation pattern that is intended. Seems like it would deactivate that uh, north side of the building. Um, and that, that bike garden and art, art garden would get very little use. Um, and then, oh gosh, I had another thought, but I've, I've lost it. I do think that. Just putting some signage that says this is a dead end uh, would be sufficient to prevent the um, you know, people going down there and having to U-turn. Um. And then, oh, the other thing is that, you know, it made a very strong impression on me my first year on planning board. When I, when our chair at the time, John Gersell, strongly objected to an applicant's plan to gate some accesses. When I, when our chair at the time, John Gersell, strongly objected to an applicant's plan to gate some accesses. And you know, he said, look, Boulder doesn't do gated communities, um even if there are um, you know, neighbors' concerns about you know, who might be using or, or, or walking next to or doing other things next to their building um on a multi-use path. We don't, we don't gate our access in Boulder, you know, that's not how we deal with any um public safety concerns that might arise on a multi-use path, so um I'm, I will not be supporting this.
Kurt?
I agree with Mel and Laura, I think they made good points. I also think about visitors to the site. Even if it's the, the card activated, for example, gate, the visitors are not gonna have access. And so they wouldn't be able to use that route at all to get to, you know, to some kind of parking, bike parking. Or even just as a, as a pedestrian access to go and visit their friends or whatever. And the reality is, we have um dead-end streets all over this city, we don't gate them off, they don't go anywhere. I mean, they do go someplace, they go to, you know, properties, and this also goes to one property. And um so I agree that signage should be adequate, um and you know, I, I, I understand that it's probably not ideal from the, uh the property owner's standpoint, but um this is what happens when you live in a city and there are people around. Um we, we, we work with them, uh so I will not be supporting this.
Uh neither will I, and so rather than address anything else, I can count the votes, so um I'm gonna uh call a vote. Mason?
No.
What's that? Did you say?
I did say that.
You said no? Okay, alright, okay, Claudia?
No.
Okay, Kurt?
No.
Uh Laura?
No.
And Mel?
No.
And I'm a no, okay. I've been there. It was just last week I had one of those, like, I'm, that was, I'm, I'm, no, okay, alright, um. Let's uh go to um. Those were the two that were, that were in dispute, do, can, can we add, no. Okay, the eco pass, okay. Does, does anyone want to take up the applicant's position on that? Okay, so. If we're doing this, should we just go ahead and move staff's position up and we'll just vote it like that? Yeah, let's do that, okay, we're, so we're just going to, Thomas, we're going to, um, I'll. Let's do this, do we have any other that are, the eco pass is contested, so let's, let's move that up. Uh copy staff's position up and, okay. As a condition, I move, prior to issuance of building permit, the applicant shall construct and complete. Oh wait, no, that's, no, that's the wrong one.
The blue one above.
Oh, well. But I'm not taking up the applicant.
You're looking for number five, the staff number five.
We, we have, we have now taken apart staff's, so in the main motion, with says uh staff's, can I see the main motion again, please? And subject to the recommended conditions of approval, we have now started to take those apart. And we have two of those, so we need to, if we're gonna carry on with this and we're going to adopt staff's position that the eco passes are at permit, then we need to make that motion.
I think that's what it already says in the recommended conditions of approval.
Yeah, we, we, we voted to approve the, or, I'm sorry, we moved
Okay.
To approve the recommended conditions of approval, so those are wrapped into that motion, so these are motions just.
Are there any, okay.
Add or adjust, I think.
Are there any other conditions of approval that we want to tweak?
Well, there was the last one of the applicants that staffs.
Related to public improvements, yeah.
Okay, so can we see, let's scroll back down, thank you. Okay, so who wants to?
I can do it.
Okay.
So I move that uh a condition of, of approval be added to the effect that public improvements will be completed prior to the certificate of occupancy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Kurt, would you speak to that? Nope, okay, Laura, do you have any comment?
No.
Okay. We're going to vote, Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Mel?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, so staff, you're clear, we're clear about the current state of the conditions of approval. Okay, alright, is there any other, does any board member have any other proposed? Laura, I see your hand up.
Yes, and I just put it in the chat for Thomas to copy. Is that sufficient, Thomas, or do you need it in email? Okay, here it is. Um and I'm happy to take any, this is one way to do this, there might be other ways to do it, I'm happy to take any friendly amendments before we look for a second. Um but I move to amend the site review to require one or more resident amenity spaces along Folsom to be a shared amenity with the public that will be a neighborhood-serving commercial use for the public to the satisfaction of staff at the time of tech doc. I think that's clear and that that follows the pattern that we have seen in other projects be successful. Happy to take any friendly amendments, and I would also like to ask the applicant if a condition like this would be acceptable to them, or what they think about it.
Before we have the applicant uh um address it, I'm more curious if if anyone with or without any changes to the language is um going to second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Alright, so. Laura, go ahead and it's your motion, you can speak to it.
Well, I would like to check in with uh the applicant to see if, if they have thoughts about this, not that we are necessarily bound by what they think about it. But if they have anything that they think would be useful for us to hear, I would love to hear it before I speak to it.
Sure.
Uh thanks, Chris Jacobs, um I would say um adding commercial creates uh several challenges for us that we would be reluctant, um that seem unnecessary. Uh number one, I'd say financing, financing challenges in general. Um we already have a very low parking ratio. We have below a point nine ratio of spaces to residential units. Any lender, even though there may not be parking requirements by the city of Boulder, a lender is going to require parking spaces, which is going to further reduce our parking ratio. Secondarily, you're talking with lenders now that are looking at a mixed-use building instead of a residential building, given the financing climate for any commercial space, that shrinks our pool of lenders and lowers the financial feasibility of the project. Um similarly with insurance, now you're insuring a mixed-use property. Same struggles with commercial, smaller pool of insurers, higher costs. And then, of course, now we are, um we have commercial space that's going to be levied with commercial taxes for space that will likely not be revenue generating. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So that leads me to a question for staff in terms of would having a shared residential amenity space, these are interesting questions that we haven't, haven't come up in past site reviews where this concept has been explored and adopted, um how would that space be classified if it is a residential amenity space? But the applicant or the, you know, the operator of that property also allows members of the public to pay a fee to use that space. Is that classified as a commercial space and taxed and all of that accordingly and shown on the plans as mixed use?
Sorry, yeah, we'd probably consider that like a second principal use if it's gonna be functioning as a commercial space that is open to the public. Um not saying that that's not allowed, but we would consider it a second principal use.
Is that what happened with the space on Thirtieth Street, the project there by the firehouse?
Yes, but they also already had a commercial space, uh it was like maybe a cafe or something on the corner.
Right, you're right.
The, the condition was to convert the co-working space to be open to the public as well, but they already were a mixed-use building.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay.
So I was, I'm ready to speak to my motion, but if other people wanna follow up on that, I'll, I'll wait.
Well, okay, have, have you spoken to your motion and are you ready for other board comment or a vote?
I would like to speak to my motion and say, once again, I am persuaded by considerations I did not know about, so I think this hearing has been very useful. And I think that, as Mason would say, the juice is not worth the squeeze, so I'm actually gonna be voting no on this one.
Okay, let's, let's head to a vote here, okay, uh Mason?
No.
Claudia?
No.
Kurt?
No.
Uh Laura?
No.
And Mel?
No.
And I'm a no, okay. Any other conditions by any other board member? Kurt?
Uh I move that plans be revised to show a curb cut for the north side multi-use path at Folsom Street.
I'll second that. Would you speak to it?
Yeah, um I was concerned that there was no real access, direct access to this multi-use path from Folsom. Uh it, it, as, as the plans currently exist, it would require someone biking to bike along the sidewalk, either from the south or from the north. The nearest curb cut from the south is right at the um, the driveway there. So they'd be getting up on the driveway and then going on this sidewalk, the main sidewalk, and then turning onto the multi-use path. From the north, I don't know where the next curb cut is, but I think it's a long ways, I think it might be at the Horizon West building. Uh so it just, it makes it not very usable from a bicycle standpoint, as a pedestrian, it's not so bad. But I think it just works much better to have a curb cut so that people can be coming up the, the multi, the um bike lanes on Folsom and then turn directly onto the multi-use path, that's the way most of our multi-use paths work. Uh and it sounded like the applicant was fine with it.
So, a second, I concur, and, and as I ride around town, and that's my predominant mode, I am stunned at times by, we have pedestrian and cycling infrastructure that is barricaded by a curb or a lack of a curb cut, or the curb cut is wildly far away. And so I have these little routes that I do to make a curb cut and so forth, but I also know from my experience on TAB that if we don't have a curb cut, actually adding curb cuts in, in our future projects is, can be troublesome. So anyway, I think this is good, if the applicant supports it, I, I hope we all do. Any other comment or question on this motion? Okay, Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Mel?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Was that a yes from Laura?
Yes. Okay. Are we? Any other, any other board member have any other condition they wanna propose? Okay, seeing none, then we are back to the main motion. And uh who made that main motion? Kurt? Okay. You wanna speak to that? Who, who, who seconded that? Okay, Laura, okay.
I feel we've talked plenty.
Okay. Alright, uh Laura, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, I just wanna say, um you know, I think for those of us who are on the planning board and we deal with the planning board's uh criteria that we have to apply on a regular basis, this project very clearly um meets those criteria in the way that we worked through in our discussion. I know that um probably for some folks who are neighbors to the project and uh this, you know, attending planning board meetings might not be their favorite or regular thing to do on a Tuesday night, it might seem pretty impenetrable. And I wanna say that um you know, our, our duty as planning board members is to apply the criteria, which are based on goals and objectives for the, the city of Boulder as represented in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and the municipal code, the, the Boulder Revised Code. And if the project meets the criteria, then we approve, and if we're gonna deny a project or condition a project, we have to have a, a reason based in code. And you know, in, in a city like ours, um you know, a building going up to, next to a neighboring building i- is not uh cause for compensation or for denying a project, um unless it meets some very specific criteria in the code, which, which this project did not, so. Uh I, I just wanna say, we really appreciate every resident who came out and every person who came out to testify on this project. And uh we do hear you, and um it's not that we're unsympathetic to the concerns. It, it's just that we have to apply the code as written, so, um and use our best judgment about meeting the goals as uh exemplified in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, thank you, Laura. So uh I'm going to read the motion and we will vote. So the motion for us is site rev, is, is a motion to approve site review application number L U R twenty twenty four dash zero 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 seven seven and use review application number L U R twenty twenty four dash zero 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 seven eight. Adopting the staff memorandum as findings of fact, including the attached analysis of review criteria and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Okay. Mason?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Mel?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, that uh concludes item five B, congratulations to you all. Thank you for a good application.
Thank you for the, thank you for the time tonight.
Okay, we are um back to our agenda and we now are matters from uh the board, the director and the city attorney. So um are there any matters items from the board? Seeing none, hearing none, okay, how about um our planning director?
Um so you guys were invited to uh consider whether or not you wanna craft another letter to council, um after, I think it's been a two-year break. Um so we've put, we'll put that on the matters agenda for our next meeting, which is on the twenty eighth. So we can have a conversation about whether you guys wanna send a letter, and then if so, how you wanna craft it, whether or not you get a subcommittee together and how you wanna do it. I think the deadline is December mid-December, if memory serves me, so we have a little bit of time to figure it out.
Okay, and, and you're suggesting the October twenty eighth, not the next meeting, which is?
The twenty.
Wait, um.
Twenty first is canceled.
Yeah, we don't have anything on the calendar on the twenty first, our next meeting is the twenty eighth, so I'm suggesting we put it on for matters on the twenty.
Okay, so we have nothing until the twenty eighth, okay, alright, very good. And Kurt?
I just want to, I want to mention that I think one topic that I like the one topic that has come up multiple times that I think would be an appropriate thing to put in the letter would be, and obviously we can discuss this and see if there's consensus on the board, but the role of area plans and how they fit into the site review criteria. Because that's something that we've run into and struggled with over the over the the past few items.
Yes. Okay, and any matters from our city attorney?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mason, did you have something? You were, no? Okay. All right, then this meeting, we we just did our little calendar check, the next meeting's.
May I add a calendar check?
What's that?
May I add a calendar?
Yes, please.
The planning board and city council have a joint meeting, special meeting planned in December, on December eleventh, to discuss the comp plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Just wanted to make sure formally.
And if you can send out a a a meeting invite?
Absolutely, yeah.
That would be great.
We will send some more information as we get it. That's reflected on our P and D S calendar.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, hearing no further actions, then I I call an adjournment. Okay, thank you all.